Okay, good morning. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeals hearing for March 28, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual meetings, hearings until March 2023. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the Board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting, as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the Board, of the public, who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raised hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide their comment. In the interest of time, and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called upon, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, roll call. Ms. Panato?
Here, good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Collins?
Here, good morning.
Mr. Valencia?
I'm here, good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Shepherd?
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Ms. Better Barazza?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Stenbridge?
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow members.
Good morning. I will turn it over to you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on the agenda is for the approval of the hearing minutes from February 7 to 2023.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next on the agenda, we go for 9:30, we go to the extensions that are before us. The first is for case BOA, BOA 818377, with the address of 1111 Terrace Street. This is the third request for an extension due to expire on April 25 of 2023. If an extension request is granted, the new expiration date will be April 25, 2024.
Okay, is Mr. Ross present?
Yeah, I am. Hi, Madam Chair. Good morning to you, good morning, members of the Board, Mr. Secretary. It is true, this is the third request of this particular address application. I might put it in some context here. The initial relief was granted 12/18/2018, so the Municipal Relief Act existed in between then and now, the entire one year and three months. So if you subtracted that, you'd be left with one year and six weeks. That was, say, a clean grant from the Board, if you will. So, you know, with take removing the statutory required and allowed extension period of the Municipal Relief Act, the non kind of non-statutory relief that we have received from this Board was that one year and several weeks. And now we're at a situation where the, you know, there's, there's, obviously, you've heard this, there's instability in the market, and the rates are very difficult. One other complicating factor is that the principal, this is a two-person team that owned, is the owner of this 111 Terrace Street project. The one the principal's had serious health complications as well, so those all conspired to bring me back here for a third request before, before you, Madam Chair.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to grant extension to April 25, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good morning.
Next, we have case number BDC 29846, with an address of 1954 Commonwealth Avenue.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Paul Ruffo. I'm an attorney in Boston. It's Smith, Duggan, Cornell &amp; Gollup, 88 Broad Street in Boston. And I'm happy to report that this project has actually made a lot of progress in the last year. This is a project that goes back some years, but to just focus on the progress that we have made, and this is a request for an extension to March 31, 2024. Within the last year, we were able to connect with the Planning and Development Department. We filed a description of the project change. We were assigned a new project manager, Scott Greenhall, who's been great at organizing multiple, multiple meetings for us with the planning.
Mr. Ruffo, are you confident, Mr. Ruffo, are you confident you can proceed with an extension to March 31, 2024?
Yes, just to cut to the chase, we filed a draft small project review. That's what they've advised us to pursue. We're going to pursue the small project review. We have an IDP unit component to this project now, so we feel like we're on track, and we'd be grateful for an extension.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffo. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for an extension to March 31, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1067117, with the address of 6 Kelly Court. This is the first request for an extension decision, which will, which will expire on April 23 of this year. If extension is granted, the next expiration date will be April 23, 2024. Is the applicant or representative present?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Attorney Patrick Sweeney. I represent Judy Tibbetts, the homeowner here. My address is 261 Main Street, Charleston. Members of the Board, this is a property that Mrs. Tibbetts, who's in her late 70s, acquired from the BRA many years ago. It was actually made up of two different parcels, one being 6 Kelly Court, but it had been combined. Mrs. Tibbetts, back in 2019, started to subdivide the property, and did subdivide the property with the intent of building a home for her son and grandchild. As a result of the fact that it was BRA property, at one point it was subject to an LDA, we had to go through the process of creating a new one. All of that took until July of 2022. At that point, Mrs. Tibbetts paid the requisite fee to the BRA to BPDA, at that time, to subdivide and create a new LDA. Unfortunately, health reasons and financial reasons prevent her from going forward. In February, we sold the project, and we have a developer who's going to build a home as planned, but he has submitted the necessary documents, and he's waiting water and sewer approval. So we need a little bit more time just to complete that.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. May I have a motion?
Motion to grant extension to April 23, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 892898, with an address of 267 Old Colony Avenue. This is the second request for an extension, which expires on March 27 of this year. If extended, the new expiration date will be March 27 of 2024. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Ruffo. Walk us briefly through your extension request.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. My name is Mike Frymore. I'm a managing member of 267 Old Colony, LLC. We currently have applied for a building permit. The only piece that's missing is the BER approval, which we've had a meeting last week with the BER Board, so we're pending approval. We have an at-risk permit, and the project is under construction. We anticipate to have a full building permit in the coming weeks.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve an extension through March 27, 2025, 2024?
May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to the Board's final arbitrary hearings for 9:30. Let's go get to 9:30. The first two are both companion cases, the first being BOA 937921, with an address of 1449 to 1443 Hyde Park Avenue. And the companion case to that is BOA 1161387, with an address of 8 Daisy Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Marancy, business address of 168 8th Street, First Floor, South Boston. I'm here covering for my colleague, George Marancy, today. These matters were approved by the Board as companion cases on March 23, 2021. There were two applications. One, the first application, was for a renovation of the existing building at 8 Daisy Street, leaving its occupancy as a two-family dwelling. The second application was a renovation and extension of the existing building at 1449 through 1453 Hyde Park Avenue, and changing that building's occupancy from a two-family to a nine-family dwelling. In other words, the two buildings, the total number of units is 11, 2 at Daisy Street and 9 at Hyde Park Avenue. That is an increase of seven units, all of which were in the Hyde Park Avenue building. The reason this is here for the Board of Final Obtor is that the ZBA decisions recite that the Hyde Park Avenue building's approved occupancy was for seven units rather than nine. That was meant to indicate seven new units in addition to the two that were already there. So nothing is in fact changing. ISD merely wants the ZBA to confirm that the total number of units approved at 8 Daisy Street is two, and that the total number of units approved at 1449 through 1453 Hyde Park Avenue is nine. This is exactly shown on the plans and approved by the Board on March 2021, and we're just merely clarifying the ambiguity in the language of the decisions. Thank you, and I'm gonna turn it over now.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the Board?
No questions.
All right, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
May I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd? Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
The third and final case in this category is BOA 1005452, with an address of 22 Mount Boden Terrace. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, I am. I am Philip Perezko, architect for the project, representing Adnan Salon.
Can you walk through the case? What is the issue?
Um, the, I sent a detailed letter and attached plans of the issue at hand. What happened, the Board approved on August 24, 2021, the, a set of drawings that was presented by Attorney Stuart Schreier. That set of drawings, the Board requested clarification and a return to the Board with those clarifications. They consisted of defining a basement space as how it would connect to the first floor of the three families. This is a project built on a vacant, wanting to be built on a vacant lot. There was some question about the grading and access to the front door. There was an accessible entrance into the first-floor unit, and it was believed that, it was shown to be a difficult way of coming into the building. It was thought that perhaps grading could clarify that. We hired a civil engineer who shot grades, and we developed a plan without the need for an accessible entrance onto the front of the building. The clarification of how parking and those elements would take place, the civil engineer was able to develop that grading plan and show that. There's no change, it's a clarification to the drawings. The unfortunate situation is that the client in January of 2022 was, the only drawings that he could have signed off were a set of drawings the Board had never seen. It was the original application drawings given to ISD or the Zoning Board of Appeals. So that did not show the same drawings that Attorney Schreier had presented in August of 2021, August 24, 2021. So I hired his architect, tried to, I reviewed the YouTube video, the public hearing, and noted all the questions that were asked by the Board members in asking for clarification and a return. So we developed in a set of drawings here that we label as Group C, Set C, which shows the connection between the first floor and lower level. The Board wanted to be assured that it would be only a three-family, and that a unit wouldn't be mothballed for a basement space. So they wanted that stairway and access clarified, plus the definition of that space. Our plans show that, and they show this new entrance without the need for a handicapped accessible entrance. The grading shows that and proves that. So the set of plans that we submitted with our letter to request this Board of Final Obtor hearing shows those things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Better Barazza, any questions on the plans?
The only question I have is more of a clarification for the six parking spaces. Did you receive a variance for six parking spaces, and is that still the same?
It's still the same, and that's how the drawings were shown.
Okay, so you did receive a variance for six parking spaces?
Yes, we did. It was, anyway, yes, we did.
Okay, and that's still remaining, the six parking spaces?
Yes, as shown.
Okay, great. No further questions?
Any other questions from the Board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Valencia? Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move to the 9:30 a.m. hearings. At this time, we'll ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals for this time period that someone would like to put forward?
Mr. Secretary, I have two. This is Attorney Ryan Spitz. First one being 518 Park Street.
518 Park Street, yeah. And the second?
The second one is 110 Tudor Street.
Are you?
Okay, um, I'm, I apologize. What was the second address?
110 Tudor Street. Page four.
It's page two, actually. I don't know what version you have. Who's pulling it up so that Norm can read it into the record?
First one is case BOA 1405701, with the address of 518 to 520 Park Street, and the second being BOA 1407102, with the address of 110 Tudor Street.
Well, they're not companion cases, so we're voting on them separately.
My apologies.
That's okay.
So back to the first case, number 11405701, 518 to 520 Park Street?
Yes, so Mr. Spitz, what's the, what's the?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams &amp; Marancy, business address of 168 8th Street, First Floor, South Boston. The reason we're asking for a deferral today, there is a companion case on this at 522 Park Street, which includes the off-street parking for this extension, a livable space at 518 through 520. Both applications need to be heard simultaneously, so it's going to have to be re-advertized and regrouped together, so we would ask for a deferral on this matter, please.
What, what timeframe? What's the earliest, sorry, what's the earliest available?
Madam Chair, earliest available is May 9 of this year.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes, May 9, of course.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
The second deferral is requested for case BOA 1407102, with the address being 110 Tudor Street?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams &amp; Marancy, business address of 168 8th Street, First Floor, South Boston. In this case, we made some substantial changes to the plans and still are awaiting a meeting scheduled with the local civic group to discuss those changes, which is scheduled for April 10. So until we can complete the community process, we're just asking for a short deferral on this matter.
Thank you. And again, what's the earliest available?
Madam Chair, the earliest available at this one would be May 23.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the other cases for the 9:30 a.m. hearing. First case being BOA 1296348, with the address of 142 Birch Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago, with Drago in Tuscana, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here in behalf of the applicant, Alex Gibson. And I also have Eric Zacherson, the architect from Context, with me as well. This is a pretty straightforward matter, as you can see in this rendering. We are proposing to change the occupancy, or confirm the occupancy of a one-family dwelling that's on the property now, to keep that building at an addition in dormers, and to change it to a two-unit, two-family building. These would be two separate townhouses, front to back, and these would be condominium units. This would also include three parking spaces in the rear of the property. Those spaces would house the folks in this building, and they would be accessed through an existing curb cut and driveway that's on the property now. This, this photo shows the existing building. As we went through the community process, we felt it was important to try to keep this building, which we were able to do, and build it with the addition and the dormers on top. As you can see, it fits in the context of the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. If we could go to the next slide, please. This particular zoning district, we now get into the plans, is a 2F 5,000. Our lot size is slightly under at 4,990 square feet. The existing building is a two-and-a-half-story structure that would be adding dormers to make it three stories. The building to the left of us is a three-unit condominium building. To the right is two units. It's a mix of mostly ones and twos, and some threes in this area. You can go to the next slide, please. As we went through the process, we originally had proposed a three-unit building. The community felt that was excessive of the lot, so we were asked to reduce that, also to increase parking from two to three spaces. You can see in this You can see in this site plan where the addition begins and ends at the back of the building, that addition would be accessed on the side. That would be Unit 2, and the front unit would be accessed through the front door. You can see the 10-foot curb cut that leads to the three spaces in the back, two of which are full spaces, one is a compact space. The unit breakdown, as was mentioned, these are almost identical units. These are both three-bedroom, two-bath units. Unit 1 is 2,200 square feet and Unit 2 is 2,110 square feet. The basement is just, will be used as storage space and HVAC condenser space. As we go up to, in the floor plans, Unit 1 would have the living kitchen, half-bath, and that would also house Unit 2's living kitchen and half-bath. Second floor, also identical on the buildings, it would house two bedrooms and a bathroom for Unit 1, two bedrooms, bathroom, and a rear deck in the back for Unit 2. And then the third floor would have one additional bedroom for Unit 1, a bathroom and an office space, and then Unit 2 would have same one-bedroom office and a rear deck on that unit in the back of the building as well. As I had mentioned, we're diligently within the numbers to reduce the size and scope and change this building to get to these two-family style units that you see today. Just to go over the violations, we're slightly under on the lot size, as was mentioned, at 4,990 square feet. Because we are dormering the building, we are going up to three stories at 35 feet eight inches, so we would need height variances, would allow us two-and-a-half and 35 feet. So we're slightly over by eight inches on the building height, and then two-and-a-half would be allowed in stories, and we're at three. Our FAR is .87, .5 is what's allowed under the code. We meet side-front setbacks. Rear yard, we're at 23 feet nine inches, 40 would be required, so we do need a rear yard setback. Parking, we're still short under the code, but we do have three spaces, two per unit would be required, and then we're under on open space, 1,750 square feet would be required. We're at 565 square feet. I can pause now and answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. A quick question, are there currently parking spaces or are you adding them?
Yeah, there's a garage in back that would come down, there's like a structure in the rear, so there is something in the back now, about two spaces, but we would be adding the additional on that. The additional spot came from our work with the community. They asked for more parking. We originally do.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you please let me know what the dimensions of the curb cut is?
It's 10 feet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a concern, it appears that you're going to clearcut all the mature trees and landscaping on this site to accommodate that parking, is that correct?
So there is some trees in back that would come down just to make the parking functional, but we're able to have landscape and we can even plant a tree in the front. We had said, some of those trees are on the back property too, that sort of overhangover, so they wouldn't have to come down in this picture. We would only take down what's necessary. So yeah, but we are keeping as much of the landscape as possible. We also agreed to permeable pavers as well. But we are open to, if there's anything the board would like to recommend, obviously, for design or modifications, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, no other question, just a concern. I just see that the proposal is essentially destroying, destroying all the open space, all the green space. The driveway is very long, the three parking spaces are not really allowing the usable space to be used by the new residents, so that is just what I wanted to present to the team, because these kind of projects allow more space for cars, but remove all the usable space for the families who will be living there. So I just wanted to share that concern, because looking at the site plan, you can see that most of the space, the usable space, is taken by the new driveway.
So, thank you, Ms. Valencia. So there is an existing driveway with the garage in back. We would be taking that down, but to make the turn radius, you're right, I mean, we would be, if the board wants to see more green space, we were only proposing two spaces, which are on the site now. We got strong pushback from the community to add additional parking. We would be happy to modify that, if that's something that the board would like to see. I know the BPDA recommendation for approval had asked to look at potentially tandem spaces. We would be happy to do that. This was all driven by process, so.
Right, but just to Giovanni's point, you are expanding the footprint, where previously when, where it was an enclosed garage, there was open space in between the buildings.
Understood, I think.
Okay.
Yep, yep, sorry. I think if we were able, you know, if we had torn down the building, we might be able to shift things over, but folks wanted us to keep the existing structure too, so it did make it a little more difficult, but understand what you're saying.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held three Butters meetings for this proposal. Initially, there was a lot of opposition expressed from Butters, but as you heard from the applicant representation, they'd made some alterations to the project. There was a strong push from what I understand for more parking spaces on the lot, if it was going to be, density was going to be added to the lot. We understand that they also did some outreach with RVMS as well, but with that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Start. Connor, what's RVMS?
I believe, Jeff, you might be able to comment on which civic that is? Is that Roseland Village, May trees?
Yeah, we had reached out at the time, there was no group with jurisdiction. We had reached out to the two recommended and were told this was not in the jurisdiction, so this was all driven by a butter man.
Thank you. Any other testimony?
Chair, I have a little bit of applause at the moment.
Thank you. Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with some provisos. One is BPDA design review on the lot, paying special attention to the material, recommending permeable paving material. And the second proviso is to preserve or replace one-to-one existing trees. And that's it.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
No.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have two companion cases, the first being BOA 1337949 with the address of 120 Birch Street. The second case being BOA 1422402 with the address of 122 Birch Street. Are the applicants or their representatives present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. This is a proposal to erect a single-family dwelling with two off-street parking spaces in a 4,096-square-foot vacant lot. This proposal is located within a 2F 5,000 sub-district. Single-family will consist of approximately 2,026 square feet of total living area. First floor will be an open concept living room and a kitchen. Second floor will consist of three bedrooms. Third floor will consist of a family room. We have three violations on this proposal. Two of the violations are existing conditions, one being the lot size, as it is, what we're proposing, the lot is under the 5,000, which is required in this sub-district, and the other being the lot width, as the existing condition is under 50 feet. We're at approximately 41.45 square feet. The last violation is the side yard setback. We are compliant on the right-hand side of the dwelling, but we're slightly below the 10-foot requirement at approximately seven feet six inches, which is the side that is abutting the shared driveway. As you are aware, there is a shared driveway owned by 120 Birch Street, which is set in the back of this proposal. That dwelling has provided an easement for a driveway access, which resulted in the sister application for the violation for 120 Birch Street. At this time, I'm going to pause for any questions or comments from the board.
Okay, Mr. Spitz, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held two Butters meetings for 120 and 122 Birch Street. We understand that there was initially some concerns with the density that was proposed, but changes were made to the proposal to address those concerns. With that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion of approval with BPDA design review paying special attention to the site plan, again, to reduce excess paved surface of the proposed driveway and increase previous lot space, lot area.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Ms. Bede-Raza.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have another set of companion cases, this being case BOA 1433530 with the address of 7 to 9 Ferndale Street. And the case going along with that is BOA 1408738 with the address of 11 to 13 Ferndale Street. Are the applicants or their representatives present?
Ms. Wallace, are you present?
Yes.
Okay, great. She's on mute. There we go. The floor is yours, Ms. Wallace.
Sorry, I just made our panelist switch, might have muted her for a second. By all, can you unmute yourself?
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I am the managing partner of the 9 Ferndale Building. The owner of 11 to 13 is also present. We also have the engineer who designed this plan. The plan that is being projected right now is not the most recent version. There was a updated version uploaded to the system in which we made alterations to the number of parking spaces in accordance with the refusal letter we received, the size of each parking space, and with the intention of increasing maneuverability space. I'm happy to share that, if I'm allowed to, but it is also in the portal.
Yeah, we can't share, we can't share your screen, but what's the difference in what's listed in what you're proposing in terms of parking?
Yeah, so the parking spaces on each lot would be reduced by one each, so there would be four on the 7 to 9 Ferndale side and three on the 11 to 13. That would allow the spaces to be moved perpendicular to where they are now, so that they would be along the two sides and increase maneuverability space. We also have our engineer here who will be able to provide more context on the plan specifically. This project is just to provide access to these two shared parking space lots for the buildings.
Got it. Any questions from the board?
No question, comment, Madam Chair. What she described is what BTD, Bob D'Amico, has described that he'd like to see.
Actually, I was, yeah, I was going to ask Norm.
What's his feedback?
His feedback is 7 to 9 to 11 13 Ferndale Street should be reduced to three spaces on each lot, and parking spaces should be placed at a 60-degree angle to allow for safe maneuverability.
So he wants three on each lot, not three and four?
Yes.
Okay. Was that your question, Ms. Bede-Raza?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Number of units on each side, can you just go over that?
Three.
Three units on each side, so one space per unit. And the size of those units in terms of bedrooms?
They vary. I can only speak to the one I live on, which is two bedrooms.
But you're the proponent for this project?
Yes.
So can someone on the team speak to the bedroom count on both sides?
And also, if someone can comment on whether 11 and 13 currently has an existing driveway and parking spaces at the rear.
So I will speak on behalf of that question. 11 to 13 has a curb cut on the other side of the building, so we would be proposing to move that. They currently do not have a driveway or parking lot in the back of their building. 11 to 13 is three units with three bedrooms each, and Ferndale is three bedrooms.
And it's same ownership, correct, the two lots?
No.
So there would be a memorandum of sorts?
A shared easement, the driveway, yes. Steve, I believe, is the, if he is able to speak, that would be next.
Steve?
Yes, good morning, Chair and board members, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, all. Yes, in regards to this project, there is a curb cut that is currently in place on the left side of 11 to 13, but due to setbacks in the way the houses sit on the property, that access on that side is not feasible due to the bump out in the house on the left side of 11 to 13. It only provides a six-foot clearance, which would not be feasible for a vehicle. That's why we developed an easement between both properties, between the two houses, which gives us our 10-foot access to the rear yards. And the current plan, I did rotate the parking spots as wished by Mr. D'Amico to fit and give us a better turn and radius. And subject to the adjacent properties, much like in the rear on Lot 33, which is 8 Elmhurst, where they currently do have existing parking in the rear, similar to what we're proposing. I believe they have four parking spots at this time. So we're asking the board to approve the spaces based on the adjusted comments from Mr. D'Amico to move the curb cut as well.
So just to confirm to the applicants, so Mr. D'Amico was requesting three and three, and you're proposing three and four, can you just speak to that before we open it up?
Yes, so on the comments with the size of the parking spaces requested, we were able to fit in another parking spot due to the space on Lot 20, which is 7 to 9 Ferndale. That configuration of the house at lot gave us an extra spot where on Lot 21, 11 to 13, the configuration only allows us to have three parking spots. With that extra square footage on the lot, and basically the shape of the lot is a little bit different, it allowed us to get the extra parking spot in at the required dimensions Mr. D'Amico asked for.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I open it up to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held in a Butters meeting in early January. Our office held a Butters meeting in early January. We also directed the applicant to reach out to the Talbot Norfolk Triangle Association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time, and we'd have neither letters of support or opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Worrell's office?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayame Delmuywa. I'm the Office of Counsel, Brian Worrell. The applicant for 7 to 9 Ferndale Street, having received no letters of opposition or support, and having a majority of support from the abutting Civic Talbot Norfolk Triangle, the council will write a law record in support of the project.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Here, are you getting them? Yep, a raised hand. Any other elected officials' office?
Hi, yes, this is Councilor Murphy.
Oh, hi.
Hi. I do want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy.
Thank you.
I'll make your panelists as well, and I have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with two proviso. One is BTD design review on the parking layout to have adequate maneuverability. The second is BPDA design review on the site plan to ensure open space and to ensure also permeable paving material. And I guess the third one would be to limit the parking space to be three on each side.
So does that, do you still require a BTD to review? I guess you're, it sounds like you're both taking both.
Yeah, so there's, so the BTD, there's three proviso. One is to ensure that there's only three parking spaces on each lot, and then the BTD is looking at parking layout and maneuverability.
May I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Next case is BOA 1365541, with an address of 132 Devon Street. Is the applicant or representative for them present?
Yes, who's in Cruz for 132 Devon Street?
And Sean Smith, I'm Jose Cruz. I live in 37 Lake Street. And I believe the owner's on also.
Okay, are you walking us through the proposal?
Yes, we are proposing to erect a new three-family dwelling. Each unit has three bedrooms, two baths, with a living room and a eating kitchen, and we're looking for relief for front, side, and rear setbacks.
Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, so we went to a community meeting. When we went to the community meeting, they had asked us about providing parking. So what we did, we had a, I don't know if you guys have the latest site plan, where we showed, where the owner proposed to share the driveway, and we had the surveyor show two parking spaces behind 130 and 132 Devon Street. The owner lives at 130.
Okay. Are there questions from the board?
Can you walk, there's no site plan on these, can you, well, they're sort of a site plan. Can you walk us through the site plan of where the parking would be?
So when we talked to the surveyor, what we proposed, what the owner proposed to do is to put a shared driveway in between both properties. The driveway would be 10 feet wide, so we would shift over the existing curb cut just over about maybe a foot and a half. And so the driveway would come in between the units, and we would propose to put two parking spaces behind the existing house and two behind the proposed new structure.
Any other questions, Ms. Panado?
No.
Any other questions?
Jeff?
Yes.
Would that require any zoning relief for the abutting property for having an easement going over the park over to create that driveway? Kind of similar to what we had on Ferndale?
Yeah, I was going to say, Jeff, I don't have drawings of that proposal, so I don't even think we can table that.
Yeah, I didn't want to speak for the owners, but it just seems like it may be a companion case, and I don't think that the board would want to do it in two pieces.
Right, so one idea would be to recommend potential deferral.
Would you like to propose that?
Well, it's to the applicant for them to know that there's two options. One is to move forward with this, but we can't really review the proposal of parking because that's not in front of us, or whether they would want to entertain deferral to bring as a companion case is what Jeff is mentioning.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes, yeah, I talked him through the board. What I have is ready, and he said to me, going to the meeting and show him, and after the meeting finishes, we can give it to the plan. I had the plan physical with me. I want to send it to my photo. He can see it.
Well, we don't have those plans to review at this time, so the options were mentioned that you could defer and make them companion cases or proceed without the parking.
Yes, I want to send, I want to send it back to the.
She said, do you want to defer, meaning you had to show the easement, or you could just continue without the parking?
We can continue without the parking.
He wants to continue.
Okay, that's fine. Are there other questions from the board? No, okay. With that, may I open it up to testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held a Butters meeting on September 26. Some residents were very supportive of this project, supportive of having a new three-family, especially with having off-street parking to accompany the proposal. Other residents on the street expressed concerns about the existing density and felt that this, despite being on-street parking, would add to a competition of parking spaces. We had the applicant meet with the Devon Normandy Brunswick Streets Resident Association, who opted to defer to the judgment of this board. With that, I turn it to you guys. Thank you.
Councilor Worrell's office?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Io from the Office of Counsel, Worrell. The applicant for 132 Devon Street having no letters of support or opposition, and the direct Civic Intervale Normandy Civic Association sending a letter for a deferral. The council would like to follow suit and defer to the board as well.
Mike Kozu?
This is Mike Kozu for Project Right 320, the letter A, Blue Avenue, on behalf of abutting residents. We do want to confirm that the applicant did meet with a couple times with the association to address their concerns. We are concerned about this project proceeding without the parking plan being in place, so at this time, we wish that they would have deferred, and since they haven't deferred, then we will wish still pause until this plan comes together with the all-street parking plan.
And I have no additional raised hands. Thank you, Mr. Kozu. With that information, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval and also encourage the applicant to return to the board with a parking concept.
May I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Madam Chair, before we continue, this is Javier, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can we get clarification for our records? Is this approved without parking, really, or without?
It sounds like that's not part of, I mean, that's not before us, correct?
Yes, I just want to clarify before.
So we're, I mean, Ms. Berberaza can confirm, but she's putting forward a motion based on the proposal as is, correct?
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Okay. Let's continue. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case number one, case BOA 1299109, the address of 252 to 252 A Sharmen Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant and owner, Eric Tam. And I also have the architect Evan Stellman with Cullson Design. What you're looking at is a rendering of the front of the building. This building is already existing. We are proposing to change the occupancy. It's an existing four-unit building down to three, so reducing the occupancy for larger units, renovating the existing structure. We are looking to add a rear addition, square-off an addition, and add staircases in the back. That's where the square footage would come into. And then also, there would be some living space in the basement, laundry room, storage, rec area, and bathroom. This particular sub-district is an MFR. These additions in the rear are very common. Our back of Butters is a public park. The lot, the unit rate down is now, at this point, if we were to, these are, unit one would be a two-bedroom, two-bath, that's 1,624 square feet. Unit two, 761 square foot, one bed, one bath. And then unit three, 1,817 square foot, three-bedroom, two and a half bath on top. As I had mentioned, this would reduce the unit count, and these units would become As we went through this process and working with Eight Streets Association and neighbors, we actually reduced and introduced a series of pullbacks in the rear of the property. The first floor, which is already existing, that goes out as four foot, two inches in the rear, but as we start to move up the building, we instituted decks, open-air decks in the back, and pulled the building in in the rear. On the second floor, we pulled in eight feet, seven inches, and then on the third and fourth, we pulled in 13 feet, seven inches as well. Basically, what this addition would give is an extra 663 square feet aggregate, and it gives us a rear stairway as well in the rear. The violations are, I'm going to go over those now. We were cited for G-Cod, and we submitted our no-harm letter, stamped Boston Water and Sewer Plans, to Mr. Seminelli. We were cited for FAR at 4.2. We were cited for parking, there's none provided existing, so we're actually reducing unit count, but no parking is provided. And then usable open space, we're close, 226 square feet total would be required, and we are at 198 square feet. I can pause to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Can you confirm the current to planned height? There were a few letters of concern that, you know, talked about going from three stories to five stories and some other things, so I just want to confirm the height that you're, the floor is.
Yeah, the height is staying exactly the same, so this is, the only thing we're changing is in the back, and in this perspective, you can see we're actually, the right side is existing passing, so we're actually coming out in the upper levels, but then pulling in and adding those stacks. Now, on the left side of it, we're adding that stairwell, which does bump the building out on that left side, but gives us the stairs.
Other questions from the board?
Why the bathroom in the basement if it's just for storage and laundry?
It's one room and a rec room, too, just more out of convenience, just to have when folks are down there. It's like a, you know, almost like a gym area.
Jeff, do you want to comment on your feedback for the basement unit in terms of it being on a coastal flood resilience?
So, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Berberaza. So I don't see how the coastal flood resiliency overlay district would apply in this case. If you read through, and again, I'm not an expert on it, but if you read through the applicability, it's all for additions of 20,000 or 10,000 or more, or substantial rehabilitation over 100,000 square feet, or units over 15. I have A, B, C, and D of all the applicability, and I don't see how it applies here. But even beyond that, we'd be limited into the laundry and rec only use, so there's no bedrooms, there's no kitchen. But Jeff, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that the C-FROD applies, and you're exactly right, Jeff. It's just, if you have been looking at our recommendations for every project that's been in a C-FROD, even if the C-FROD is not applicable, we're not in favor of any living space in basements.
Okay.
This has happened in Southie, South End, and I completely agree with you, Jeff. It's not, it's just the policy.
Okay. Thank you.
It's recommended, so based on what you've seen, Jeff, would you be okay if there's a rec room? Or are you actually not recommending any activity?
Personally, I would be more opposed to if there was a new unit in there.
Okay.
Than, you know, if there were bedrooms, you know, not taking the last board's position of the bedrooms and basements. But, yeah, if it was in a C-FROD and it was a separate living unit, separate unit altogether, not connected to the first floor, I would have more of a problem than what this proposal is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held multiple Butters meetings in March of 2022 and March of 2023, and the applicant met with the Eight Streets Neighborhood Association multiple times as well. There were some concerns from residents of the overall size of the project, as well as some concerns over the notification process. The applicant reduced the size and scope of the addition, you know, after feedback from those neighbors. The applicant also received direct support from direct abutters, and our office received two letters of opposition. Again, at this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
We have a raised hand, GS. Can you state your name and address for the record once I'm muted and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Good morning, my name is Gail Suyamoto, and I am also here with John Malouf, and we live at 8 Bond Street in the South End, just around the corner from the proposed project. We have submitted a letter of opposition to this project, and many of our neighbors feel the same way. There were multiple issues with the notification process for the most recent abutters meeting. None of us received notice for that. Our strongest objection is to the size of the addition in the rear, and so while the front is not being touched, the rear addition is currently three stories and is going to be five stories. Most concerning is the top, the fifth floor addition, because none currently exists in the area where an addition is built out on that top floor. I do note that the applicant had made modifications to address some of the concerns, but they did not address the issue of such a great build-out really for the fourth and fifth floors. And the sentiment of the neighborhood association was that this will lead to each applicant on this section and in the area wanting to build out. and in the area wanting to build out a greater level on the upper floors. I will note that this project proposes to increase the F A R from two point two-nine, I believe, to over four, and to increase the square footage of the house to over five thousand square feet. We are also concerned about the use of space in the basement. There are currently no windows at all in the front of the house on that level, and they are proposing to put two windows in the rear, but in a light well in, on the rear for that lowest level. It includes a rec space and also office space, laundry, and a bathroom. So it will clearly be used more than a mudroom, it's going to be living space in that basement without egress at grade level.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Mr. Drago, just to reconfirm the height issue?
Right, so we're not adding another level, Madam Chair, if I may just respond quickly. This type of addition is very common, it's actually on both sides of us. Bond Street is a significant ways away, but this wouldn't even really affect anyone on Bond Street. But again, in terms of the notification, we've had three meetings with the civic associations, three of butter meetings. I think the issue is some of these larger buildings, when flying, we actually sent supporting documentation by way of photos of us actually putting the flyers on the buildings. We're not allowed, as you know, to put them in mailboxes, so we have to either tape them or to doors or try to get inside the building, which we did, and we did provide the mayor's office with pictures of that. All of the meetings before the civic association were well-attended, and the group actually made the recommendation to us of the pull-ins that they wanted to see and the design changes which my client accommodated. So, again, in the basement, this would only be used for laundry room, a little rec area, and storage. And, but that is the only use that we would be looking for. By making these units larger, we're actually gaining those square footage to make these family-sized units, which many folks around us wanted to see, and we're happy that we're reducing from a four-unit building down to a three. Thank you.
Does this building have to go through historic commission review?
It does not, Madam Beraza, because it's only in the rear of the property, it's not touching the front of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with two design proviso. One is that you do not have inhabitable spaces in the basement, and the second is to have B P D A design review on the exterior, paying special attention to material to work within its context.
May I have the second?
Ms. Berberaza, if there's any exterior changes that subject to the facts about us, just curious.
Well, that's what Jeff, Jeff, that's why I was asking, Jeff, Jeff said that there's no purview on the exterior of the rear, of the rear, only on the front.
Oh, okay, okay, so you want on the rear, I'm sorry.
Just on the rear, because that's some of the concerns from the neighbors, yeah, great.
My fault, sorry about that.
Thank you, all right, sorry, did we have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Sorry, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case B O A one four two zero eight six zero. The address of one eleven fifty-four to eleven sixty Washington Street is the applicant for their representative presence.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark LaCasse, LaCasse Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the trustees of the Colombian condominium building at eleven fifty-four Washington Street, and with me is Bob Wells, one of the trustees of the building as well. We can stop right here at this screen, so the Colombian building is shown in the picture on the left side of the plan. It was built in eighteen ninety-two, and was actually one of the first buildings on this stretch of Washington Street to be revitalized into residential use, way before any of the other new buildings along the stretch of Washington existed. It's currently comprised of City Lights, which is a youth arts organization in the commercial unit at ground floor, and there are eight residential units on the upper floors occupied by unit owners. The proposal before you today is shown on the right-hand side of the screen. Although there, well, the proposal is for a common roof deck for the eight unit owners and the City Lights group to be able to access. There's an existing headhouse shown at the bottom of the plan there, a large box on the roof that has been there for a very long time that is accessed from a common area staircase on the sixth floor, and that would be the access for all of the unit owners to go to the roof deck on the top floor, which is eight hundred eighty-seven square feet. The trustees and their architect worked carefully to sort of position the roof deck such that it is behind the existing headhouse so as not to be visible from the condominium building next door. And because of the height of the parapet that you saw in the picture of the building, it's really not visible at all from the street or from Peters Park across the street, because that parapet is about four feet high when you're standing on the roof itself. There are two zoning issues presented by this proposal. In the South End, Article sixty-four, Section thirty-four, the restricted roof structure regulation requires that this board grant a conditional use permit for any roof decks in the South End. The examiner cited two items pursuant to Section thirty-four. One is that the code requires, as you know, the preference is for access to roof decks be through a hatch, not a headhouse. But given that this is a pre-existing headhouse, the proposal is to use the pre-existing headhouse with the pre-existing stairway from the common area as the deck access. And because the height of the existing building constructed in eighteen ninety-two exceeds the maximum height limit in the South End of seventy feet, technically, the roof deck is adding to that because it is above the roof line. However, because of the parapet in the front, it's not at all visible. And following this board's action, we would go to the South End Landmarks Commission for either a determination of exemption because it's not visible, or if they do determine it's visible, which is basically impossible, we would then submit to design review by the commission. But we believe that the way it's been sighted behind the parapet makes it not visible. As you can see, the architect shot some sightlines there from across the street, way across the street in Peters Park, and because of the height of the parapet in the front, visibility is not an issue. So those were the two zoning items, and that is the proposal before you, and with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Okay, may I have a public testimony?
Hi, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and crucially, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an a butter's meeting in January of twenty twenty-three where concerns over noise, safety, and a number of variances requested were risen. We received two letters of opposition for this proposal, and at this time, we'd like to defer to the board, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go.
Yep, we have another raised hand, Doug R., and then Jeff Hefton. Doug R., you can unmute yourself. You may not be giving testimony, Jeff, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. The B P D A recommended, our recommendation. However, I've been asked that if it does get approved, that we know that the Landmarks Commission may not have jurisdiction, but B R A, sorry, B P D A would like to take a look at this, we'd like to do some sort of design review on it too.
All right, and then Doug, are you looking to give testimony here?
Yeah, hi, I'm a director butter.
Can you give your name and address?
Excuse me?
We just need your name and address first.
Yeah, Doug Rudish, one one six six Washington Street.
Okay.
I'm a director butter, I apologize, I don't know how this process really works. I sent in a long note with my comments, hopefully you guys will be able to take the time to read them. I would appreciate it, I just, I also believe there are material elements left out of the presentation that was just given by council, which include a fire pit and a grill. Those material elements were also left out of the a butter's meeting and only came up in the Q and A. There were some variances also granted to them a year ago for the headhouse in the back of the building, so I would like you to consider this request holistically with all the variances already granted. I think it's been broken up into pieces for a reason, because they're asking for a lot. I think the shortest summary is, I can live in the main roof deck they proposed. The fire pit and the gas grill are problematic, I don't like the idea, the main roof deck for a variety of reasons, but, you know, sometimes got it.
Thank you, have any additional, we have no additional raised hands at the moment. Mr. LaCasse, do you just want to address that issue?
Yes, Madam Chair, of course, any grills or fire pits are subject to separate review by the Boston Fire Department and I S D pursuant to building permits that would require hard-piped gas lines to supply the gas to those devices. Not at all unusual, not uncommon, there are many, many, many roof decks that have such devices, they're just subject to a separate permitting process and not considered part of a zoning case.
Thank you.
We do have a raised hand, Doug?
Well, Mr. Wells is trustee, so maybe we should hear from him.
Yes, just to, just to quickly answer Doug's comments, one in particular, he talks about some permits that were issued a year and a half or so ago, they are in fact unrelated to this. The penthouse structure that has existed there for thirty years has been purchased and has been proposed to be rehabbed, that has nothing to do with this deck proposal. Permits that were issued for that had to do with connecting that penthouse to the floor below so that it would become part of the back unit.
Do you have a raised hand by Eric as well, you want me to take that, Madam Chair?
We'll take one more, sure.
Okay, Erica, I sent a request, I'm going to, once unmuted, can you give your name and address and briefly explain if you're in support or opposition?
Sure, I'm representing my parents that own eleven forty-six, eleven forty-eight Washington Street. Bob and Wells and I have spoken, I understand that he's going to need access of my parking lot if this does get approved to bring up the materials. I just want to make windowed record that if this does get approved, that if we do work something out, which I see we will, that the building or he will take responsibility of any kind of liabilities of having this crane or whatever the case may be with these materials, so it doesn't damage or the neighborhood buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion of approval with B P D A design review.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, at ten fifty-two, I recommend we take a break for eight minutes until eleven A M for the next set of games.
Sounds good, why don't we take ten, just to, all right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Panato? Here. Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Valencia? Come back to him. Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Here.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Here.
Mr. Valencia?
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Stenbridge.
For the 11:00 AM hearings, I will ask if there are any deferrals or withdrawals on cases from this time curve.
58 Murdoch Street. Ward 22.
That's the first case, sir.
Yeah. That would be case BOA 1330427. The address being 58 Murdoch Street. And I believe we have the applicant or the representative present.
Yes. Mr. Drago?
Secretary, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking an administrative deferral due to the fact that the project was significantly reduced in size. New plans were submitted and because there are two buildings, we have to be assigned two addresses, which we are still waiting on from ISD and then plans to be reviewed. So we are seeking a defer.
Okay. Javier, what's the earliest deferral?
Madam Chair, the earliest is June 6.
Is what? June 6? Okay. Jeff? All right, may I have a motion? Motion to defer. May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
If there are no other deferrals or withdrawals, the next case is BOA The address being 1379 to 1385 Blue Hill Avenue. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, we're here.
You identify yourself and put your address in the record?
Sure. My name is Kim Napoli. I'm here today on behalf of Underground Legacy Social Club. My address is Nine Springs Lane. And we also have two other representatives, Jonathan Napoli and Isaac Hampton, who are here as well.
And I'm at the same address as Kim.
Sounds good. Would you like to walk us through?
Sure. Are the plans, everything is up on the screen? Okay. And I just want to make sure it loads before you guys go ahead and get started. Okay, great. So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. As mentioned, my name is Kim Napoli. I'm an attorney and again, I'm here on behalf of Underground Legacy Social Club LLC, which I'll just refer to as Underground Legacy. Again, with me today are Mr. Isaac Hampton and Jonathan Napoli, who along with myself are owners and operators of this facility. I think we also have members of Helicon Design here. Are they on the call?
Hi, I guess, Efa Troxel here with Helicon Design, business address 76 Summer Street in Boston.
Great. So we are all here to answer any questions after we give an overview. I'll get right to it. So this is a proposal for a licensed adult-use cannabis retail store. Underground Legacy is a, is both a Boston Certified Equity applicant and a certified Massachusetts Social Equity Program owned business. We have received Boston Cannabis Board approval in the form of a host community agreement for a retail store at this location. In terms of the operation, again, it's a proposed adult-use retail store located at 1379 to 1385 Blue Hill Ave. The location includes 2,000 square feet of retail space that is currently zoned for commercial use. The proposed hours of operation are 10:00 AM, 9:00 to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sundays. There are no buffer zone conflicts with schools or other marijuana establishments at this location. Regarding the business at its core, Underground Legacy is a social justice-focused operation. And what we're looking to do is use our platform really to correct the socioeconomic ills that face this community. We have a personal relationship with this community that runs deep. Our CEO and general manager, Isaac Hampton, is responsible for day-to-day operations, is a longtime resident of Matapan. He grew up on Lock Hill Street, which is just across the way from the proposed location. He's also a Massachusetts Social Equity Program participant. John Napoli is the founder and owner of The Hempus in Back Bay and the Boston Gardener in Nubian Square. He also possesses a licensed cultivation and manufacturing facility and then two adult, adult-use retail stores, also in Massachusetts. For my part, I was the director of outreach, I was the director of outreach for the campaign to legalize in 2016. I am social equity myself. I served, I have served on the Mass Cannabis Advisory Board at the pleasure of former Governor Baker since 2017. John and I are both homeowners in Nubian Square. I served on the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan Oversight Committee and John served on the Project Review Committee. All, all of that to say, we care about this, this area, this neighborhood and look to do a good business there. In terms of this site plan, so again, it includes 2,000 square feet of retail space that is zoned for commercial use. No buffer zone conflicts. There's one single floor with two modes of egress. And the way that works in practice is customers will enter through the front door into a vestibule. They'll present their valid government-issue ID. Their age will be confirmed as 21 years or older. They are then allowed into the main sales floor area where they can make their selections. Their ID will be checked again at the point of sale. The customer will then exit the store. We do have 12 parking spots on site, none of which are for designated for employee use. We'll have at least one designated for differently abled or handicapped, limited mobility individuals. We have, we plan to have a workforce of about 20 employees with 10 full-time, 10 part-time. For those employees, we will subsidize travel to and from work to ensure that those parking spots are available exclusively for customers or for deliveries. As it relates to product deliveries, they're going to pull into our private lot that is controlled exclusively by us. We will maintain at least one parking spot alongside of the building exclusively for those vehicles to park. And there will be a single point of entry for secure delivery to the vault. So someone will come in from the company making the delivery. Our agent will meet them at the door. They will check the manifest, make sure that everything is in order. It will then be transported again into the secure vault, which is limited access. There will be a security guard present for all deliveries that are coming and going to our, sorry, that are coming to our facility. I'm going to pause and ask if there's any questions on that?
Well, I have a couple of questions, but they're more related to your proximity. I, I know you mentioned you're not within buffer zone issues, but you are close to a library and the Mildred Ave K to 8 schools. Do you want to just, when you get to that?
Absolutely. Let me just pull up my analysis I have here. So we are, the law requires that we be not within 500 feet of a K through 12 school or within half a mile of another marijuana establishment. We've drawn the, drawn the lot lines or the, measured the distance from plot line to plot line and there is no conflict with any of those required, any of those entities. Specifically, the Mildred, K, the Mildred Avenue School is 712 feet. So just over that 500.
If you want proceed.
So let me just go back to my notes.
Are there a separate egress and ingress? You enter one place and exit at a different location?
So Kim, if you want me to do that. The way I operate my stores now, and I think works the best, is you, we have one entrance into the security vestibule area. And I know this drawing doesn't show two into the store, but we plan on having two doors going into the store. So one will be for entering and the other will be for exiting. We find that that works the best for more of the customers and security.
We actually do have two modes of egress, as you'll see on this photo. There's the bottom right-hand corner that says entry and the left that says loading. Those are designations we made as representations. However, they can be modified to change the egress through, into and out of the building as necessary. So at this time, we had only intended to have this one entryway, but we have made it a point to make a consideration as to whether or not that second entrance should be a point, another point of access or egress.
Any other questions from the Board?
So if there was to be a second modes of egress, we would just need to, you would just need to think about safety in terms of a sidewalk, because right now it seems like that's where loading is happening.
Yeah, for verification, the customer will not be going out that second mode.
Okay, right, okay.
That would just be for employees or delivery drivers.
Okay, that sounds good. And then this question is for Jeff Hampton. As we're seeing a lot of cannabis shops populating our city, I'm noticing that the public realm suffers a little bit because you have a lot of graphics and it seems like a bunker. So has the BPDA put out kind of a position in terms of, you know, you typically review signage? But what is your position in terms, and I don't think this, you know, this project is set back from the sidewalk. And so me, my comment is more general, as we start just continuing to review cannabis establishments. What is the BPDA's position in terms of cannabis exterior facade elevations and graphics relative to the public realm?
I think we, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else knows better than I do, but I think we're kind of hamstrung on the transparency of windows for facilities. We really don't have, to my knowledge, a policy in place about what kind of design we're going to be looking for in terms of facade transparency or improvements like that. I can absolutely bring it up after today's meeting. That it's a concern for you, Ms. Bede Barazza, if it is a concern, but I can absolutely.
It is because you, you, you know, there is security, which is fine, you know, in terms of the neighbor, the neighborhood. But in terms of, you know, in, in this case, you're taking over glazing, you know, and so there's always this idea that you can experience the depth of a store. But in these cannabis establishments, you, you can't really necessarily see because of security reasons, but maybe there is a, a way to be innovative, you know. So right here in this, in this design, you have some checkerboard graphics. And I, and I would just say, if, if the BPDA can take a look at this, maybe there is more innovation, more of a contribution to the public realm in terms of artwork to be a little, to be a little bit more bold. So that, that's just my feedback.
Yeah, I will, I'll bring it up today.
Okay, but I'm sorry that I'm taking your time. You know, I think your project is set, it's set back. So, you know, but this comment is just for everyone and the Board to, to understand that it is having an impact.
I absolutely appreciate that comment. That's something that we actually have focused on. And we want to take this corner and a lot of corners, you know, speaking about Nubian Square in particular, which is not this neighborhood, but similar in the sense that there's a lot of storefronts that could be revitalized and really make the neighborhood come alive.
Yeah, and have Nubian artists, yeah, have Nubian artists, this is an additional campus. So, great, thanks.
100%, yeah. And we, we do have strict rules that we have to follow relate to the commission, the Cannabis Control Commission. You can't, like as you said, you can't see into the store, but that doesn't mean that you can't create some sort of enticing facade that uplifts the neighborhood. And that is intent, absolutely is one of our goals with this, with this proposal.
Thank you.
John, did you want to jump in?
No, I was just going to say the state won't allow us to, you know, have windows that you could see in. They won't let us have neon signs or cartoon characters. So there's a lot of regulations we have to follow from the state of Massachusetts. But we, we are very interested in creating a space that is appealing to the neighborhood and to our customers.
Yeah, so I think I was going into transportation. We have had a traffic study done. We commissioned Plus and O'Neill to perform this and to assess the impact that Underground Legacy would have on the community. I believe that has been sent along to you. If not, we can send it over. In short, the study found that there is no impact. There is a wealth of public transportation, including an MBTA bus stop right along the front of the store. There's also directly across the street, MBTA stop, that's the 28, 29 and the 31 bus routes. Matapan Station is about three quarters of a mile away with probably service from Ashmont Station is available. As I mentioned, there's the 12 off-site parking spots. And then there's also bike racks available as well for. And then there's also bike racks available as well for people who will be riding their bikes. And then, um, at present, there are two bike trail locations within walking distance of the site. So, um, great location for walk by and we really plan to push up that, um, you know, not relying on fuel, uh, to get to the, the store. Um, and subsidizing employees' transportation so that they don't have to, um, so that they have easier time getting there and so that they don't have to, uh, park on site either. Um, Isaac, I'm going to ask you to run quickly over the employment plan, employment diversity and positive impact plan.
Okay, so in terms of the employment plan, um, 80% of our, our, um, employees will be represented. It will be, uh, individuals from the city of Boston, uh, with a particular preference being given to Matapan residents. We've, we have a number of residents we're currently working with that have expressed interest in, uh, who are within the buffer zone. Um, uh, who have expressed interest in working at the store. So there, nothing would make us happier than to be able to employ people who can work, walk to work. Um, 60% of our, uh, staff will be, uh, um, BIPOC. Uh, 50% of our staff, we have a strong commitment to making sure that 50% of our staff are, are women. Uh, we've committed to 30% of our staff, um, being individuals with, uh, drug convictions, marijuana convictions, or individuals who are formerly incarcerated, as well as 25% of our staff being, uh, from the LGBTQ plus, um, population as well. Uh, we have a number of programs that we're going to institute to, uh, help our employees as well as the, uh, surrounding community. Um, one more worth mentioning is a minority business mentorship program that will provide technical and financial assistance to individuals who want to, uh, start a business i- in Matapan. Um, and then, uh, as I mentioned before, our commitment to, uh, diversity, um, gender diversity. We are making sure that 50% of our management positions are occupied by women. Go to the next slide. Uh, so in terms of our, our compensation and benefits, um, no one will start at less than $18.50 an hour. Um, that's the, the lowest, uh, obviously based on experience, could be higher. Health, dental and vision will be provided to everyone along with paid time off. Um, Kim mentioned earlier, uh, that we'll be doing subsidized, uh, transportation passes. Uh, we also have a number of, uh, uh, other programs, um, innovative programs such as, uh, profit sharing, bonus tables. Uh, we have some partnerships with other local minority owned businesses. Uh, we consider ourselves the health and wellness business as well. Um, so we've provided, we're going to provide our employees with some opportunities to participate, uh, in some things like, um, uh, gym memberships and nutritional counseling, things of that nature. Some of it will be free, some of it will be deeply discounted. Next slide, please. And so we have, um, three main components to our positive impact plan. Um, the first being, uh, the formation of a community advisory board, which will be made up of seven individuals from the community. Uh, we will meet with these, this board, uh, at least quarterly to get feedback on, um, how we're doing as a business. Uh, but one of the main sort of responsibilities of the board will be to determine, uh, where our 1% annual gross, uh, profit donation goes to. Uh, so we're committed to making this donation, uh, perpetuity. As long as we're in the community, we will make this donation. Um, and this board will determine what cause, uh, is worthy receiving these funds. Uh, we are also committed to doing, um, bimonthly cleanups of the area. Um, and we are giving, uh, residents the option of requesting help, uh, with cleanup of their property. Spring cleanups, fall cleanups are things that come to mind. Uh, we're going to give a deep, uh, preference to elderly residents as they may not have anyone to, uh, assist them. Um, and so we will be in touch with local organizations to make sure that this information gets disseminated as well as just, um, flyering going door to door. Next slide, please. Uh, one of the, the issues that is of particular, um, uh, interest to us and concern to us has to do specifically with, uh, women and the maternal mortality rate that African American women, um, and women of color, um, experience um, at the health, hands of our healthcare system. And so in order to make our contribution to combat this, uh, we're implementing a program that offers, um, uh, free, um, doula or midwife services, uh, semiannually. Um, individuals will, um, have to attend a clinic that will put on, uh, where they will receive information about the risk, the health and risk factors, um, that go with consuming cannabis, uh, when you're pregnant. Um, and, uh, by attending this seminar, you can, uh, you become eligible to, uh, utilize the services of a doula or a midwife. And we have, uh, we're working with a couple of duelas right now, um, to implement this program. Uh, and this, this, these particular services have a value of up to $5,000 per person.
I'm going to jump in, Isaac, real quick. So we had, um, just to, we're on the side about community outreach. We had our community outreach meeting on October 20th. Um, we met with a number of, of others, um, and really talked through a lot of, a lot of, you know, what our proposal was then has been shaped in part by the feedback we had at that, uh, at that meeting. We have received a letter of support from, um, uh, the Office of City Counselor, Felix Arroyo, or, um, excuse me, Ricardo Arroyo. Um, we also have recently, in the past couple of days, received a letter of support from the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council as well.
We'll, we'll get to that during the public testimony.
Oh, okay. So, uh, let me just step back and say part of the, um, this support that we, the feedback that we have, that is, uh, meaningful to us. We've taken that and we've modified our proposal and our business operations to reflect that. Um, the good that we're trying to do here in terms of the business is for the benefit, of course, for our benefit, but for the greater benefit of the community. You've seen this in our proposals for the workforce improvement, um, and also for the neighborhood, um, with an eye towards making the neighborhood, uh, more aesthetically pleased, more aesthetically appealing. Um, and we also, uh, through this, uh, operation, we have a security plan that will also benefit the neighborhood in terms of providing additional eyes, additional bodies, additional, um, walk by in traffic. Uh, there is, uh, more detail in this, on the security plan. If you'd like to review that, we'd be happy to. Um, but I just want to make sure that that was raised that before we moved on to the next section of this. So, John, you want to go over safety and security?
Yeah, yeah, no problem. So the state, um, requirements for the security are actually quite robust. Um, we have, uh, full camera coverage in the interior. Basically anywhere cannabis can go has to have, uh, camera coverage. There is also exterior camera coverage, uh, as Kim just mentioned, that will be facing outward into the parking lot and toward the street. Um, the, the footage is required to be held on to for 90 days. We need to have 90 days worth of storage on all our monitoring equipment. There will be panic buttons, uh, located within the security vestibule, behind the counter and also in the vault. So if anything happens, we have a direct line to the police. Uh, the monitoring company as well will be notified. The, um, customers are all ID'd before entering. You're, you're checked with a real ID scanner and you will be, um, checked twice, um, to verify your age. There is, um, as far as deliveries go, there are two delivery drivers. We have to receive the delivery with one of our agents, with one of the delivery drivers. And one of the delivery drivers will stay in the vehicle. We make sure that all the product is accounted for and once it has been inventoried, the delivery will leave and that is, uh, product is put safely in our vault. We have a bank account. We will also be accepting debit cards. And, um, I recently have entered into an agreement at one of my other stores that allows me to take credit cards. So the most secure thing we can do is to reduce the amount of cash that is in the store, which we are doing. Uh, and regardless, we will be bringing, um, cash to the bank every other day to minimize, uh, any risk there. And that goes with a secure, um, security company, whether it's like, uh, Eagle Eyes or Plymouth, Plymouth Armor. You know, it goes in one of the secure trucks to the bank, um, in a very secure setup with also two drivers. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So, um, there's limited air, access areas. So the, the CCC requires all the areas to be signed correctly. And rooms are limited to, uh, employees. Uh, obviously customers are limited to the sales floor and there's tiered access even amongst the employees. So not all employees will have access to our vault, just the, uh, security and C-suite, maybe some directors. Um, at different rooms, uh, have different security levels. The vault, uh, as well as everywhere else is under 24-hour video surveillance. In fact, the whole store is under 24-hour video surveillance. And we, like I said, it's stored for 90 days. Um, I guess I'm repeating myself a little bit here with the panic alarms. But the, the security is something that the state looks at very closely. In fact, they don't look at anything more closely than the security in the stores. And you will not be allowed to open up a store without very robust compliance security in place.
There's also a series of inspections that happen. So in addition to having, um, regular inspections, the commission will announce, they also have unannounced inspections that they do just to ensure compliance. Prior to opening, um, you are issued a provisional license. It's the first one that you're issued if you're approved. There is a post-provisional license inspection. They come in and they do their first sweep. Um, you then have another inspection after you have your final license. So again, even though they've issued you a final license and confirmed that your policies and procedures are in place and everything is ready to go, they want to come in again just to make sure that you really truly are ready to go. If at any point there is anything out of line with the regulations, um, and those regulations include compliance with local zoning, local rules and regulations as well, um, you get a deficiency notice, you're required to complete that. Um, and then it's checked again to ensure that you can open. Um, so it's not just about getting open, it's about staying open and that's what goes unannounced and announced, um, subsequent inspections maybe for. Uh, all this to just assure everyone here that the, uh, compliance as far as security and safety is, I think is one of the, the most important, if not the most important, um, pieces for the Cannabis Control Commission to ensure the safety of not only the business, but its employees and the community, uh, surrounding. So that is all that we have for our presentation, um, besides community outreach and support.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Um, as you heard from the applicant, our office held a community meeting on October 20th. And since then, they've met with a number of community stakeholders, um, meeting with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council and receiving, uh, a letter of support from them, supervisors. Um, at this time, we're unaware of any concerns. With that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Council of Arroyo's office?
Good afternoon, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jordan Fries here from Boston City Councilor Ricardo Arroyo's office. We'd like to go record and support this proponent. Thank you.
Minor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam, uh, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Parra, representing the Carpenters Union. We'd like to go on record and support all this project. Thank you.
I have no additional words. Hands. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do you want a proviso of this applicant only?
Yes, this applicant only.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
I second.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Panado? We're voting. Ms. Panado? No, she disappeared. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bedder Baraza?
Uh, yes, um, and I also just want to add that I really would encourage the applicant to use this as an opportunity to make something really spectacular on the exterior and push that envelope for the city.
Yeah.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Is Ms. Panada back with us? No? Okay. Uh, the chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, from the 11:30, uh, rediscussions, is there anyone who wants, are there any applicants who want to, uh, withdraw or request an referral? Then moving on to case BOA 1404310, address being 41 Hodon Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168, 8th Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, joining me today is Chris Drew from 686 Architects. Uh, this is a proposal to change the occupancy from a, a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling by renovating the existing structure and building out the existing third floor with a mansard roof along with a rear addition to all three floors. There'll be three off-street parking spaces located in the rear of the property, accessed via an existing easement. Uh, that existing easement will be extended to allow for these three, uh, parking spaces in the rear. Uh, project will also include updating life safety with installing a sprinkler system in the building. Uh, we are located within a 2F 5,000 sub-district. The lot size is approximately 4,512 square feet. Uh, unit one layout will be approximately 2,054 square feet. Will consist of a three-bedroom on the first floor, an additional living space in the bit, in the bed, uh, in the basement. There will be no bedrooms located in the basement. Unit two will be approximately 1,320 square feet, will consist of another three-bedroom on the second floor. Unit three will be located on the third floor at approximately 1,352 square feet, and that will also be another three-bedroom. Uh, we have violations, uh, for the use as we are in a 2F 5,000 sub-district. We also have violations for lot area, lot width, lot frontage in the side yard, which are all pre-existing non-conforming, uh, violations. Uh, we do have, uh, a violation for the FAR. We're proposing a 1.25 and a, and a 0.5, what is compliant. Uh, we do have a height violation. Uh, what is compliant here is 35 feet in two and a half stories. We're proposing 40 feet in three stories. Um, in fact, from the existing, uh, dwelling, as you can see from the drawings, we're decreasing the actual roof line from the ridge, uh, by approximately two feet, three inches by eliminating that ridge and, and going with a mansard roof style. Um, we also have off-street parking and loading requirements. As you can see, we, uh, providing three off-street parking spaces as required. Uh, we did have discussions with Bob D'Amico from the Transportation Department. And one thing that he did recommend, which we did include in these drawings, was pull the parking area to the side lot by approximately four feet. And then also indicating the dimensions, um, on the, on the drawings. Uh, the drawings were, uh, added in there. They're nine feet wide by 20 feet long. Uh, and then also we have one other violation on this property, which we believe was an error, is the rear yard violation. Um, as you can see, the, the plans are showing a setback at 41.8 feet to the deck and approximately 50 feet to the dwelling. And again, what's compliant here was 30 feet, so we believe that, uh, violation was an error. And at this point, I'm going to pause for any questions, comments or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the board?
Do we have recommendations from BTD?
Mr. Stembridge?
No, I don't, I don't have, I do not see anything on the file.
Okay, thank you.
So Madam Chair, um, if you want me to relay again, so we did have a preliminary conversation with the Transportation Department. And Mr. D'Amico's recommendation was to, from the, uh, original parking scheme, was to pull the parking area closer to the side lot by four feet, in which we did incorporate those changes into the plans.
Yes, thank you. Other questions from the board? Erin Dunn, may I have public testimony?
I'm sorry, one more question.
I'm sorry.
In your basement, you have it listed, I believe, showing mechanical?
Um, this, this, so I'm paying. This is, so I'm paying.
So yeah, the existing front basement will stay.
Sorry, I'm.
So the only new space in the basement will be on the proposed addition. So the existing basement will stay mechanical storage. And the new basement will be some of the living area because we also have direct access out of the back.
Okay, so the basement is going to be inhabitable. What's your ceiling height? Because for a three-family, I don't think you'd meet the ceiling height.
It'll be, it'll be a minimum of eight feet clear.
Eight feet clear?
In the proposed, the existing is much lower and that's why.
Correct, okay, so the proposal would be eight feet. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. Our office held an abutters meeting in November of last year. May abutters and communities support this project? We'd like to defer to the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Julie Ryan from Council Frank Baker's office. Our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with BTD Design Review of the Parking Layout for Manurability and BPDA for the site plan to ensure that they would be using permeable materials.
Second.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Shep, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Great, thank you.
Next case is BOA 1364685, address being 34 Abbott Street. Is the representative or the applicant or the representative available?
Jessica, it looks like.
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at panelists. Once you become panelist, can you unmute yourself? State your name and address. Assistant, you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, can everyone hear me and see me?
Yes.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name is Venkata R. Holley. I'm the architect and owner rep for the project. A new construction at 34 Abbott Street, Boston, MA. If I, can I go ahead with the presentation now?
Oh, yes, please.
This, the project is a construction of a new three-family triple-decker at a vacant lot at 34 Abbott. First-floor unit is a two-bedroom, one-bath, group-one adaptable, which meets barrier 521 CMR requirement. Second and third floor shall be a three-bedroom, two-bath units with decks in the rear and the front. There are three off-street parking with one handicap in the rear of the lot. There's four violations that has been stated in the denial letter, the front, the floor area ratio. If you go to the page one, I have a table there comparing the two. The required floor area ratio is 0.8, while the proposed is 1.05. The second one is a side yard setback, which is required 10 and 5 on the left side of the property. The lot is 3,680, I think, 3,280 square feet in a 3F 500, so I'm complying there. And then the only, the last violation was on the rear yard, but I was curious because it still meets the 30-feet requirement based on the plans as well. There's an open deck in the back, which I think still is compliant. So those are the four variances, or sorry, denials, violations that has been quoted. The front yard also, however, the front yard matches the neighborhood facades from the setback. We attended the neighborhood meeting and had recommendations made on providing impervious surfaces. So we did that on the driveway. And then there was one more recommendation made, was to add fire extinguisher cabinets on the rear balconies on all three floors. That was done. And then planting, small planting on the side of the building in order to avoid runoff and capture as much rainwater within the site as much as possible. And that's pretty much what I have here. There's some views that I sent over. If you want to see the view and the drawings are here.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, here and done, can we move to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held a meeting where no concerns were expressed, from what I understand. The applicant then went on to meet with the Talbot-Harvard Triangle Community Group, which opted to support this proposal. However, the group has not had a chance to meet with the, the applicant has not had a chance to meet with the Greater Mattapahne Neighborhood Council, which is requesting that this board seek a deferral on this. Sounds like they're scheduled to present to that neighborhood council on April 20th. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayeemi Dale Wewa from the Office of Council Brian Morel. In regards to 34 Abbott Street, having received no letters of opposition or support from either the abutters or the Direct Civic Talbot-Harvard Triangle, the council would like to file record and support the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you so much. Have a good day, everyone.
Next, we will go, move to case BOA 1343379, address 78 Child Street. Is the applicant or the representative available?
Yes, yes. Hi, my name's Karen Wheeler. This is Mary Ann Kopulowski. We live here at 78 Child Street in Jamaica Plain. I believe our architect, Thomas Rose, is also on to answer any questions that we can't answer. But we've lived in our home for 30 years now, and we want to stay here. We're both retired seniors. But in order to keep on living here, we need an accessible bathroom on the first floor. So our proposal is to enclose our deck, where the deck is now, similar to the way our budding neighbors have at either end of these row houses, to put in that bathroom and a little sunroom to go with it. It will go where the deck currently is now. It's a picture of the deck. With the, expand it a little bit to the right to, to our property limit there. You know, we just want to enclose it and use it for our first-floor bathroom so that we can stay here.
Thank you. May I ask a quick question? One of your abutters commented about the wall, the wall that you share being, I guess, not very soundproof and just asked what your commitment to creating a new wall, a better, stronger, you know, like a soundproof wall as part of your plan. Can you address that?
Absolutely. Mary's a good neighbor, and we've been neighbors for years and talk about things like this all the time. And our architect and contractor are aware of this and are totally committed, and as are we, to making that bathroom as soundproof as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may we have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Caballero here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And this, sorry, an abutters meeting was facilitated back on July 6 of 2022, where the abutters and other residents were given the opportunity to raise any questions or concern to the applicant and their team. At this time, I do not have any letters of opposition. In fact, I do have one of support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council that they acquired throughout their community process. Additionally, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan from City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in support.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'm sure I make a motion to approve.
Second. Ms. Panado? Yes. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1414394, the address being 17 to 19 Farnsworth Street. This is, this proposal has been through the Article 80 review process. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Yes, we're on. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you identify yourself and your address for the record and proceed?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Jay Igerman of Reuben, Junius &amp; Rose.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I have to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, for an address of 112 Water Street in Boston. With me is Jeff Kim of Perkins &amp; Mill Architects and Nick Casaro for the developer Betel Green Oak. Next slide, please. If you can get it, there should be an aerial. That's okay. It's not the, not the PowerPoint, but from the lot. Don't worry, everyone, this is in Four Point Channel. It's mid-block on Farnsworth Street, which surprisingly is still a private street that's on the left of the drawing. And there's a private alleyway on the back. So there is actually no legal access, but it did go through Large Project Review as if it were a public street. It's an M4 restricted manufacturing district, but it's also an overlay with restricted parking, flood hazard, coastal flood resilience, and groundwater. So we'll need a conditional use permit for the groundwater. At present, there's a parking garage, an open wall parking garage built in 1986. It's about 60 feet high, which is commensurate with the abutters, and has an elevator penthouse. Back in 86, they needed variances. If you go down the next slide, please, get a photograph. They needed variances for the garage. It had an FAR, has an FAR of six. The rear yard is a little shallower than the 12 feet, and there are no parapet setbacks in this neighborhood. So it needed a variance for that. Next slide, please. The proposal is to replace the garage entirely with a six-story 4.0 FAR, which would be code-compliant office laboratory building. So the existing garage, which has 389 spaces, would be eliminated. There would be no onsite parking at all. There isn't any limit on height in this neighborhood, but there is, as I said, the 4.0 FAR limit, and this will comply. We don't need a conditional use for parking because none is proposed. We do need a variance for parapet setback, again, just historically. And the rear yard will be about five feet on that service alley. And then finally, we do have no harm letter on file and approval by BWSC for our infiltration. I think for the other details, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Kim next to me.
Just to, oh, everybody, the bottom of the page, you've heard of the page before. The bottom of the page is the Farnsworth Street, and then the service alley is on the backside. On the Farnsworth side, we have the lobby and prospective tenant space as well as possibly retail spaces, retail space facing Farnsworth. And on the back of a house and loading dock will be access from the service alley side that's back of the, that's on the back of the building. Next slide, please. This is a typical floor of floor two, three, and four. They will be, they will be assigned to a tenant. Next page, please. And this shows the penthouse with the enclosed penthouse that's facing the service alley on the top of the page and the roof terrace facing the Farnsworth side on the bottom of the page. Next page, please. Top of the penthouse, so it's showing the roof. Next page, please. Shows the building exxon, that you are, you are looking at the building from the Farnsworth side. Just to reflect on the, on the surrounding buildings of the turn-of-the-century warehouse buildings, we are proposing a dark metal panel, a framed facade with the punched opening glass in the, punched opening glass. On the, on the podium side, when we talked to Four Point Channel Historic Commission, they recommended that we emphasize the podium by having a double bay. So that's what we reflect, well, that's what we reflected on the podium side of the building. Next page, please. Shows the flat elevation of the building. Top elevation shows the Farnsworth side elevation, and the bottom one shows the elevation from the service alley side. Next page, please. Next page, please.
That concludes our presentation. Madam Chair, we can take any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the board?
Can you, can you just discuss briefly the handling and disposal of hazardous waste?
Yes, first, through Large Project Review, there will only be BSL 1 and 2 at this location. The higher ratings for biochemical materials will not be allowed. So 3 and 4 are not allowed. But also, because it's a flood plain, there has to be containment. There will be licensing with the fire department, a Boston Fire Department, which is standard, to make sure that if there were a spill, and they're beyond the upper floors, that it would be contained within the building.
And the building height, is it, are you maintaining the 60-foot height, current height of the garage?
No, it goes up a bit. This is in the coastal resilience, so actually, we're required to go up another two feet. The, I think the net change is, that's seven feet. So the current parapet line is 60 feet of the garage. It will now be 67 feet. The penthouse goes up another 20 feet, but it's setback. And Four Point Channel has to review that to make sure it's not visible from the public ways. We've been through them on advisory, but we're going to go back for a formal approval in about a week.
And, and talk about parking. I know this is typically where people park to go to the Children's Museum and other kind of uses in that area.
Yes, well, the, it's a private parking garage now, as you know, with 389. But there will be no parking to replace it. Now, that was thought to be actually a benefit, that there's very large curb cuts on Farnsworth, which will be eliminated. There's, currently, I think, an interim arrangement with the Children's Museum to make sure that they still have parking. But once this building comes down, there won't be any parking at all at the site.
Okay, no more questions?
Are you addressing the green space, trees, et cetera?
Yes, that also was a focus during Large Project Review. There are three trees, I believe, now in front of the building, which are on Farnsworth, which are not in great shape. I think we're going to add it with four, and they'll be healthier species. We'll work both with BPDA Landscape Architect and the Parks Commission to make sure it's the right species. So they, they will be replaced, four for three.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
What's your construction time schedule? And have you selected a general contractor?
Nick, can you answer that?
Yeah, good, good, well, good, good morning, yes, still. It would be about 18 months from when we decide to close the parking garage with ample notice to the neighborhood and subsequent businesses. Obviously, going through the iterated, the process here, none of that announcement has happened. So we have agreed through the BPDA process that we will give on the neighborhood at least four to six weeks of notice before the parking garage is closed. And then from there, it will be approximately 18 to 20 months. And yes, there is a general contractor selected for this project, which is Structure Tone here in Boston.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Taking, hearing none, may I, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Christianson.
I'm Anna Way with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Seventeen to nineteen Farnsworth Street was a BPDA project. They held a robust community process. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Seminelli, you got cut off.
That's no problem. Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Seminelli, Boston Ground Trust, and we have both D card letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon, City Council President Flynn's office, the councilor would like to go on record and support. Based on a good community process and good faith compromises on both sides, the development will bring approximately three hundred and seventy-five permanent jobs on site, hundreds of construction jobs, as well as much needed public loan investments. Moreover, the proponent will work with the children's museum to provide STEM programming. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office, Council to go on record and support.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is represent ing hundreds of union carpenters, and we will work with City of Boston, when I go on record and support the project.
I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Jessica, any other raised hands?
I have no, I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review. I know this is an Article eighty process, so.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza? Oh, he's, sorry. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-three-nine-eight-four-eight-two, the address of one ninety-one Commonwealth Avenue. Is the applicant or the representative available?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Dylan Brown, and my office represents the Board of Trustees of the one ninety-one Commonwealth Avenue Condominium Trust, which is the organization of unit owners of the one ninety-one Commonwealth Avenue condominium. Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the, the Board of Trustees applied to ISD in order to amend its certificate of occupancy in order to increase the permitted number of residential dwellings in the building from sixteen units to twenty-one units. Specifically, the Board of Trustees is seeking to include the five units located in the condominium's basement to the certificate of occupancy. However, in order to do so, the condominium trust requires the issuance of three variances from the Board, from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Now, the condominium trust satisfies the requirements necessary for the issuance of the variance because the five units that the condominium trust is seeking to add to its certificate of occupancy are pre-existing units located in the condominium's basement. And because those basement units are pre-existing, no construction whatsoever needs to be undertaken in order for those units to be used and occupied. Specifically, the building was constructed in eighteen seventy-two and housed residential apartments on each floor of the building. But more importantly, since eighteen seventy-two, those basement of the building has been continuously historically utilized by the condominium staff, which would include building superintendents as well as maintenance personnel. In fact, the condominium trust's concierge staff currently occupies those units today. In nineteen seventy-three, the building was converted into a condominium by a master deed, and at the time that the condominium was converted, the building housed twenty-one units, which included those five units located in the basement. However, when the condominium applied for its original certificate of occupancy, the declarant mistakenly only requested occupancy for the sixteen condominium units and neglected the five staff units located in the basement. Additionally, unlike other applications where the applicant is seeking to add dwelling units to an existing residential building, again, no construction whatsoever needs to be undertaken in the condominium's basement, and that's simply because these units already exist. Any and all work that needed to be performed in order to preserve the health and safety of not only the building occupants, but the surrounding buildings as well, has already been undertaken. The Order Trustees undertook and engaged a contractor to upgrade the fire safety equipment located in those five basement units. All work has been inspected and approved by ISD, and for that reason, there's, there's, there's no impacting construction debris or noise that could impact the abutting properties, nor will any construction vehicles be congested the streets, or diminishing what available street parking that could be on Commonwealth Ave. And additionally, because all the work has been performed in the unit itself, the, the historic characteristic of this neighborhood is not going to be impacted in any manner whatsoever. There's not going to be any exterior renovations to the building, and that's simply because these units have existed since eighteen seventy-two. And therefore, because those units are already constructed and that they've been continuously used and historically occupied by the building staff, the condominium trust, through its applications, simply correcting an oversight that was omitted when originally applied for its certificate of occupancy. And for those reasons, we would request that the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the condominium trust's application, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you just tell me the ceiling height in the basement at its lowest point?
I do not have that information handy. My property manager for the, the, the condominium trust is on here, and he might be able to attest to that. But from my understanding is that everything has been signed off and approved by ISD. Oh, he says it is eight feet to clearing. He just responded in the chat.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? You're none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the justice from this board. We had the applicant's flyer of abutters, and no one attended the abutters meeting that our office hosted. They then went on to meet with the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, which opted to take no position because the requirements were existing. At this time, we're unaware of any concerns expressed by any community members. With that, we defer to this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Have a second. Thank you.
Second.
Two seconds, eleven. Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA one-two-five-five-four-one-zero, the address being nineteen Bennington Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes.
Yes, I am as well. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Gostha from Ford Law PC, two forty-five Sumner Street, Suite One Ten, East Boston, Massachusetts, zero-two-one-two-eight, on behalf of the applicant. With me as well is Jose Velada, who is the Operations Manager for La Toraza at nineteen Bennington Street. This is an appeal to change the use and occupancy of the existing restaurant to include Use Item thirty-eight, to allow live entertainment operating after ten-thirty PM at the restaurant, which requires a conditional use permit at the site. This is an existing restaurant with a liquor license and non-live entertainment license inclusive of background music, TVs, and a jukebox, and the property currently has a certificate of use and occupancy just for the restaurant use itself. Previously, the restaurant has been pulling one-day licenses from the city when they wish to have DJ nights or karaoke nights at the restaurant, and this is in effect a request to update the property so that they can have a license on an annual basis so they don't have to keep going back to the city anytime they have live entertainment going on at the restaurant. That being said, it will, you know, remain a full-service restaurant. It's not by any means looking to become a nightclub or anything like that. In terms of community outreach, before coming to the board today, we did conduct community outreach with the Maverick Square Neighborhood Association, as well as the Eagle Hills Civic Association, and hosted a well-attended abutters meeting, and we've received no opposition, and there have been letters of support submitted to you all, including from the direct abutters, who they have a good relationship with. So that, having been said, there are no other operational changes proposed at the restaurant, and there's, you know, no work to be done, per se. But we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Feel straightforward. May I have public testimony?
Good morning, or good afternoon now, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on December seventh of twenty twenty-two. One abutter joined the meeting to voice support. The applicant also met with Maverick Central Eagle Association, which voted in support, and also presented in front of Eagle Hills Civic Association, and the group also voted in support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty, to go on record and support.
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve. I am debating about this applicant only.
Your call.
Yeah, I think I would say this applicant only for the lack of music.
Okay. May I have a second?
A second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia? Is Mr. Valencia on?
Yes, sorry, I'll send him up. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA one-four-three-four-five-one-three, the address being twenty Waldemar, Waldemar Avenue. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, two forty-five Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Gary Carter. Also with us is Philip Seema from Balance Architects, who would be project architect. If we can jump down to that second slide there, Madam Ambassador, that would be a good place to start. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a pre-existing residential structure that we are proposing to replace with a new six-unit residential dwelling. Just by way of surrounding context, this is the last street in East Boston closest to the Suffolk Downs T Station. The site is actually just under five hundred feet walking distance to Suffolk Downs T Station, and certainly presents a good opportunity, not unlike some other recent projects that we have approved in the neighborhood, for a bit more dense densities, closest, closest to public transit. As you can see on the screen, immediately to our left, just for context, it's sort of a transitional site. Immediately to our left is a larger multifamily apartment building across the street, across Waldemar Ave., heading down Wally towards Suffolk Downs T Station, or additional larger multifamily buildings as you get closer to Suffolk Downs train station. If we want to jump to the next two slides, that will probably give us a little more idea of where we're looking at. That's a good place to stop. So as you can see in that first photo, our building is here, a white, two-and-a-half-story building with the driveway, the residential building to our left, the other multifamily a little bit off in the distance, you can see there, and then the newly constructed nineteen Wally Street, which is a thirty-eight unit residential building, is located directly on the MBTA right-of-way. That's how close the train station is located. So we can jump down a few more slides. I can show you the rendering of what we're proposing. Maybe one more slide is a little bit different perspective. And one more gives us probably a head-on view. Perfect. So our proposal would involve a six-unit residential building. The slope from Waldemar Ave. does slope upwards towards the back of this property. The six residential units would also have six garage parking spaces that would be entered on the right side of the building. We would also be able to accommodate trash recycling, et cetera, all at the lower level. Each of those floors would contain two units. The average square foot size of these units is about twelve-hundred and thirty square feet, so these are all generously two-bedroom-plus-size units. We certainly could consider looking at adjusting these to include three-bedroom-sized units. But one of the things I do want to point out is that this project actually started a bit larger than what, what was, what's currently before the board, and we did receive a lot of opposition from the surrounding neighborhood, not the least of which comes from some of the ongoing planning that's happening in East Boston. I do want to point out to the board that we've submitted, I believe, thirty letters of support. Many of those were people that were originally opposed to this project. My client had gone and worked directly with his abutters. Twenty-four of those thirty letters that are submitted are from direct abutters on this project, and specifically because we've addressed a number of their concerns, including reducing the size of the building, the overall density, and some of the setbacks as well. With respect to the floor plan layout, if we can jump down to number nine, slide nine, please, that would be helpful. Right here, it's a good place to stop. So as you can see on the left-hand side, we have our garage with the single entrance and the six parking spaces, as well as the entryway, as well as the storage for trash, et cetera, mechanicals. As I said, each level has two, two-bedroom units on it, front to back, with some relatively smaller rear decks off of the back. We do have some patio space at the lower, lower portion as well. In addition, you can see the retaining wall that's being proposed in the second from left-side slide. This, as I said, does slope up dramatically towards the street behind us, and although we do have about twenty-five feet to our rear yard property line, the usable area is a little bit more limited based upon, based upon the, the slope of the site. We do propose to add substantial landscaping behind that retaining wall, and that was something, again, that was requested by direct abutters. You can see that the units essentially repeat themselves as you go up to the top level with units six and seven, those should be marked six and, I'm sorry, five and six, not seven and nine. So a total of six units total. We can jump to the next slide. We also propose private roof decks for the upper-level units, so units five and six would have access from their unit up to a roof deck. We are proposing not to incorporate a headhouse on this. These would be accessed by hatch only, so it does obviously help to lower the profile of the building. And once again, this was something that we worked on very closely with comments that we heard from direct abutters on changes that they would like to see to this project. I can jump down to the next, I believe, the next plan of the elevations. Perfect. And I can stop here and run through the relief that would be necessary. So, as I said, this is sort of a transitional site where the next site over to our left is a multifamily apartment building, and then the next zoning district beyond that site is the economic development area, which allows for some very flexible zoning regulations. We're certainly divided by that line. We're in the residential zone, which is where the site is currently located, and does require a number of variances in order for this project to proceed. Again, we feel that we've worked very closely with our direct abutters in light of concerns over planning, and we will, you know, certainly continue to work with them. So the first variance that we would require is because this is a multifamily use, again, not something that is new to this immediate area of Waldemar Ave., we do request a variance for that. We do meet the minimum lot size. We actually exceed the minimum lot size in this district. The minimum is four thousand, we're about forty-seven and fifty square feet. We do the same when it comes to lot width and the lot frontage. The site itself is fifty feet. We are actually only required to have forty, and therefore we in compliance. From the side yard, there's already some pre-existing non-conformities with the current building, because the current zoning, last updated in East Boston, nineteen eighty-three, requires a ten-foot setback. We are providing a three-foot setback on the left and a four-foot setback on the right. It does provide sufficient setback because each building, both left and right, is also setback pretty well on its property line. It does allow us to incorporate windows on both sides of the buildings as well. So we do request the variance for that difference for the side yard setback. The front yard would be a modal setback. We feel that through design review, assuming this is approved, that would be in compliance with Article fifty-three and the exceptions that allow for a modal setback. Our rear yard, as I mentioned, is sloped. We do set back twenty-five-and-a-half feet from the rear property line. The minimum requirement in the district is forty. However, this is a shallow lot condition, so we are able to reduce our rear yard requirement by some, by a few feet because of the, because of that shallow lot condition. Again, this was something that was discussed with the community. The building was further back when originally proposed, and we feel that there was definitely a good amount of support for bringing this building back to the twenty-five-and-a-half-foot setback and incorporating a good amount of landscaping in the back. With respect to the FAR, we are proposing a one-point-six-three. With respect to the FAR, we are proposing a 1.63. We feel that with respect at least to multifamilies, that area, that's pretty consistent with that density. But we do require a variance that exceeds what's required in our Article 53. The height of our building, as you can see, this is a good area to look at the section of the building. Because the site does slope down, the height of our building in the back is actually about 31 or 32 feet, while the height of the building towards the front, if looking at it from Waldemar Ave, is a total of 41 feet. The maximum height that is permitted currently is 35. However, we are in line with the building to our left, which is the existing multifamily. There is no open space requirement when you're proposing any other use in this district that requires a variance. However, we do incorporate a little over 2,000 square feet total of open space or uncovered ground based upon the footprint of our building. And last but not least, with respect to parking, the calculation for this site would be eight parking spaces total under the zoning code. However, six spaces are what's being proposed. One space would be assigned per unit based upon this being a proposed condominium homeownership opportunity. Again, we are less than 500 feet from the entrance to Suffolk Downs T Station. We believe this site presents an excellent opportunity for a bit of increased density with less parking. However, it was a major concern for the community to ensure that we did incorporate off-street parking, so we maintained the garage at the lower level. I will pause there, Madam Chair, members of the board, and happy to answer any questions or address any comments.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes. In regards to the front elevation, is that a green screen that I'm seeing on the first level?
I believe Phil Seema is our architect, should be here. Phil, could you address Ms. Bedaberaza's comments, please?
Yes, that's the intent. It would be a metal trellis that landscape in the front yard could grow on to kind of keep with the symmetry of that vertical bay language, but just landscape on the ground floor.
Okay, great. Thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, I might have missed this. Oh, sorry. Who's asking a question?
One question, if you don't mind. Are these rentals or are these homeownership?
Thank you to the chair. These are intended for homeownership. Again, the community, at least the direct abutters that we spoke to, that was also a pretty important issue for them. Confirming that this would be homeownership was something that was important for their support and certainly turning some of the neighbors who originally opposed to this into support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stembbridge? That was my question too. Ms. Bedaberaza?
Yes, I have a question for Secretary Stembbridge, which is the applicant mentioned 30 letters of support, but I've only seen in front of me letters of opposition. Can you confirm whether he received those letters of support?
We do have a number of letters of support. And I'm looking at, I believe, 15 to 20.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, Ms. Bedaberaza, and I would point out, we were very specific, based upon the community process, to identify direct abutters who were most impacted by this project. Again, we fully understand the concerns in the Orient Heights neighborhood. We believe, you know, looking at these on a case-by-case basis at this time until new zoning is approved, is important. And that's one of the reasons we've worked very closely with so many direct abutters on trying to address their specific comments and concerns.
I'm going to ask Mr. Stembbridge, not to put you on the spot, we'll go through other questions and testimony, but if you could take a few minutes just to look at those letters of support to Mr. Lynn's point. Are those, do those appear to be abutters with, you know, Waldemar or, you know, close addresses? With that, we'll continue asking questions and give you a chance to look at that.
Give it to the members, thank you.
Could Mr. Hampton address the BPDA's recommendation on this?
He cannot because he's no longer with us.
I, through the chair, Ms. Panado, I did reach out to, as I normally do with my cases, to understand from Jeff what the concern. I do know the comments were to deny. I do believe that the BPDA does look at this from the original plan. They don't look at any additional modifications. This was proposed originally as nine units with a much larger footprint. And again, through the community process, we did update this plan to reduce it down to six and reduce the footprint of the building. Don't want to sound like a broken record, but in direct response to direct abutters' concerns.
I will just comment, Mr. Lynn's, that his recommendation appears to be based on your current proposal of six units. Yeah.
Mr. Lynn's, what are the dimensions of your setback to the right between your property and the property to the right of your project?
So the setback from our property line on the right-hand side is four feet. I believe we do have our site plan at slide 13, which we won before this.
Four feet. And did you talk to the aborder next door to the right?
Yes, and I believe my client, Mr. Carter, who did most of the community outreach, is on the call. Gary, I'm not sure if you can share what the initial concerns were and what we've done to address those concerns. It would be Gary Carter, Madam Ambassador. Hopefully he's able to unmute himself.
Oh, yeah. You said Gary? GC or?
GC, correct.
GC, okay, yeah. Okay, just sent a request. I'll mute you.
Yeah, hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Gary Carter, I'm the proponent. We work very closely with the neighborhood. We actually shrunk the size of the building, moved the building forward, so we get a 25-foot rear yard setback. That was important to our neighbors. We removed the front decks and replaced those with Juliet balconies. There was a concern that that would infringe upon some of the privacy of our neighbors' yards. Additionally, we put privacy springs on the back of it, on the back decks, to control the sightline to the rear of the yard instead of looking into our neighbors' yards. And Phil, can you talk some of the additional things you did?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we pushed over the building towards what you're seeing to the left. We made sure that the roof deck railings were pushed in to avoid all lines of sight. We created some privacy on the rear balconies so that you wouldn't have direct lines of sight between the neighbors, and then minimized window openings on the side yards to avoid direct lines of sight.
Thank you. Does that address your question, Mr. Valencia?
I think he asked about the abutter in the report.
Exactly, yes.
I didn't hear the answer to that.
Correct.
Oh, so my direct abutter to the right, we actually shrunk the building and we moved it over an additional foot. So now we have 10 feet between the two buildings.
Thank you. So 10 feet, that is four feet from your project and six feet from the aborder's building.
Correct, yes.
And are they in support or in opposition?
In support.
Is that one 24 Waldemar?
It is.
Yes, so we do have that letter of support. Any other questions from the board? Okay, let's open it up to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. One abutters hosted an abutter's meeting for this project on July 7th, 2022. Seven abutters attended the meeting. Most of the abutters did express discontent with the proposal, saying it was too dense for Waldemar Ave. They also mentioned the proposal's too high, and it was also mentioned how it does not fit with the character of a single-family street. One abutter voiced support and complimented the design during the meeting. The applicant also met with Orient Heights Neighborhood Council on October 18th, 2022, and February 13th, 2023. The association voted to oppose with 38 members against and eight in favor. The civic is concerned about the potential loss of single-family homes in the neighborhood. Our office received five letters in opposition and 30 letters in support. And I also wanted to mention, Madam Chair, that out of the 30 letters in support, since you guys were asking, 22 of them were from Waldemar Ave, one was from Wally, one was from Addison Street, three were from Gladstone, one from Bennington Street, one from Shashin Road, and one from Woodsport Street. At this time, our office would like to refer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. No other officials, yep. Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, just to let you know, those are the numbers that I came up with, 30 in support. The vast majority from, you know, from Saratoga Street and two letters of opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Sebastian?
I'm sorry, Waldemar Ave, I believe you meant to say. Saratoga's the next one.
He is correct.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, that's important. Thank you.
As do I.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Parra. I'm in East Boston, VA Supercouncil, Gabriel Colletta. Based on the strong opposition from Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, the council would like to go on opposition of this project. Thank you.
Okay, Sebastian, I'm going to make you a panelist if you could just accept that. We'll go to Sean next.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sean Calista. I own at 8 Mommaranzi Avenue and live at that property. I'm also a board member of the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood Council. So I'd like to go on record and say that, one, that the association, the Neighborhood Council, did vote against this, and we strongly want to protect our single-family homes. The residents of Orient Heights have been drastically fighting the zoning changes in our neighborhood to try to preserve our single families within Orient Heights. And I'd like you to please consider that. Even in the latest state of the draft of Plan East Boston, they wouldn't even allow for this sized building. So please do the right thing and deny this proposal and save our single-family homes. Thank you very much.
Carlos?
Hi, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I own two abutment properties with my wife and three kids at 15 Waldemar and 17 Waldemar. We fully support this project as it is a value-add to the community, it's a value-add to the neighborhood. And while the Orient Heights community as a whole wants to protect the single families, that seems to be on the top of the hill. This is on the very bottom of the hill, which is a main street already populated with multifamilies. This will give the neighborhood a much-needed facelift, and so we fully support this project.
We'll go to the Sean Cronin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sean Cronin. I live at 108 Waldemar, at the bottom of the hill. I would like to speak in opposition of this proposed project. It's based on the code. I believe it would be improper and unlawful for the ZVA to grant relief as proposed. Orient Heights, and specifically Waldemar Ave, is made up predominantly of 1F and 2F housing. The petitioner is focused on a few multifamily units during their presentations, but these are very much the exception and not the predominant makeup of Waldemar Ave. The lot here has no unique or peculiar circumstances that would deprive its use as a 1F for the current zoning code. The petitioner has failed to demonstrate any substantial hardship in this case. The home was purchased as a 1F with the sole purpose of overdeveloping over the existing code to maximize profits for the developer. This project exceeds the code in multiple areas and is not the minimum relief necessary for use. Asking for a variance for use, roof, rear, side, front, height, FAR, parking, shows how far this project exceeds the existing code. This plan, this project, would also exceed the city's proposed zoning changes under Plan East Boston as well. Granting these...
Can I ask you to focus on support to start with? I think we, you know, we understand the opposition and, you know, it sounds like people raised hands, yeah.
Madam Chair, just, Madam Chair, real quick, Paul Sullivan for City Council, Elijah Michael Flaherty. The council is to go on record in opposition.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
All right then. Well, in that case, let's entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, if I could kind of add one more thing before you make the motion. I know it's important. I know there's some balance on both sides of the issue here. I do want to point out that I think it's critical to consider, I know that the board typically considers context, and certainly while I don't disagree with some of the speaker's comments about single-family, I know that's a general issue, a general concern on a lot of other portions of Orient Heights. This section of Waldemar Ave seems to be geared more towards the multifamily, if any, in the Orient Heights section, as you can see from not only what exists immediately to our left, but the two other buildings as you head towards Suffolk Downs T Station. So I do believe there is some, at least, argument that if there is going to be some type of approach to generating additional higher-density housing near public transit, this site, probably more superior than most other sites in the area, would be the one to look at. So I just want to add that to the record.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice. The reason that I'm putting forth this motion is because the zoning currently is at 1F, 4,000. The proposal exceeds that with six units. Although counsel is correct that there are kind of more multifamily density around the neighborhood, currently this neighborhood district is for one family, and we would be setting a precedent, going all along the street for a higher density. So for that reason, I am suggesting to go back to the drawing board and to lower its density so it's in alignment more with the neighborhood district.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes, I agree about setting a precedent, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bedaberaza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
For the final case in the 11 o'clock timeframe, case BOA 1434919, the address this time of 122 Saratoga Street, is the applicant or their representative available?
Yes, good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Lynn's, on behalf of the petitioner for 122 Saratoga Street in East Boston. If we could jump to slide, I believe slide two would probably be the place to start. So, you know, let's actually jump down to slide four, which should be a street view, better look at this. Yeah, perfect. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, what we're looking at is the existing residential structure, actually semi-attached on the right-hand side, that we are proposing to renovate and change the occupancy to three residential units. Just for, by way of brief history, this was before the board, the prior board, actually, before the current board was appointed, where we had proposed to renovate the building, change the occupancy to four dwelling units with a little bit more of a substantial addition to the rear of the property. That proposal was denied, and the comments at that time were that the number of units, as well as the extent of the addition, were a little excessive. We had gone back to the drawing board and have revised this project to reduce it down to a three-unit project, as well as bring the footprint of this building in a little bit closer towards, away from the property line to allow a little bit of relief from our abutters to the left. In addition, we have worked with the owner of the property immediately to our left and to sort of marry up the exterior of this building. We've arranged for, you know, to take advantage of some of the economies of scale. So that was, we do renovate our building and allow for a change. We will carry that siding, as you can see here, it's a little different on both of these, across the entire front facade of this building and make the doorways a bit more consistent, just really clean up the front portion of this building. So if we could jump down to slide eight, that will probably show us a good layout of the site and what we've done with respect to the setback, et cetera. So the building itself, as you can see here, as I said, is a pre-existing semi-attached building. The area that we're proposing is the proposed addition, and then you see the proposed patio. The extent of the addition is within 20 feet of the rear setback. That is actually brought further away from the rear yard as the original proposal. In addition, that four-foot setback on the left was pretty close to the property line last time, and that seemed to raise some of the concern by the architect on the board. And that's one of the reasons why we've increased that setback a bit as well. If we could jump back one slide, it just, sometimes the BPDA abstract that we include shows the extent of the building next to us. Right, so you can see the building to our left also has an addition that extends back, and it does have some setback from the property line. We're essentially looking to go back as far as that existing condition on our left and then have a similar setback on the left-hand side as well. If we want to jump down to slide nine, that'll show probably a little bit more context of what we're looking at. So the existing building to our left, you can see the outline there. So, um, the existing, uh, building to our left, you can see the outline there. I know we do have Chris Drew from Six Eight Six Architects here to answer any questions. You can see the area to our left of our addition that we've increased the setback to allow for, again, more space between our addition and the existing addition on the left. Uh, and then we show the, um, uh, the decks and the patio and the setback and the additional, uh, landscaping that we're proposing, trash storage and bike storage in the back of the property. Uh, as you can see on the right-hand side, that is the, uh, updated, uh, elevation that shows us carrying essentially the same materials across the front of the building to eliminate that sort of chopped-up look of the building, even though the, even though these are owned by two separate owners. Uh, we felt it was important, and certainly in response to some of the community comments that we heard, to, uh, try to, you know, create an opportunity to make this building look almost as a single building, even though it's owned by, uh, multiple parties. We want to jump down to, uh, slide ten, we can look at the, um, floor plans. We do have a basement, uh, we're not proposing any, uh, habitable space in that lower-level basement. The first full level is about a little over a thousand square feet. That will be a three-bedroom unit. If we scroll to the next slide, we should be able to see units two and three. Here we go. So unit two, uh, looks to be about not, a little under a thousand square feet, two-bedroom unit. And unit three, uh, similar with the, uh, rear deck, as well as the access to a roof deck. That would be exclusive only to unit three. We can jump to the next slide, please. So we do show a roof deck, um, and I will show this in the, uh, elevation plan. Uh, the roof deck is not higher than the current roofline. We're not proposing to raise, uh, the current roofline from its existing height, uh, that's seen certainly from Saratoga Street. Uh, this is all done in co- in conjunction with the addition to the rear of the property. Let me go to the next slide, please. Uh, just so our front and rear elevations, as you can see, that roof deck does sit, uh, above the addition, but below, uh, the ridge height. So we are technically hiding that behind, uh, the existing roof, uh, not necessarily visible from Saratoga Street. You can see the rear balconies and the access out to, uh, the rear patio from the lower level as well. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, just showing our right-side elevation is a good opportunity to see the, um, uh, extent of the addition. We do step that back, uh, as we move up to that third level. And again, the spiral staircase that accesses up to that roof deck, uh, all of that being tucked behind, uh, the ridge height, uh, that we're not proposing to change. Uh, with respect to the relief that's necessary, this is a two-F district. There are a significant number of three and multifamily in this particular section of East Boston. Uh, our change to the proposed use of three is not only consistent with, uh, a number of the surrounding uses, but also consistent with Plan East Boston's, um, uh, changes for zoning for this area. Uh, our lot size, uh, that is proposed as twenty-two hundred fifty square feet's existing condition, uh, that is in excess of the minimum lot size that is required for the district, so, uh, no issues with compliance on lot size. The same applies for width and frontage. Um, we do have an existing non-conformity with respect to the side yard. Uh, we aren't, uh, proposing to increase that anymore with respect to this addition, and therefore, uh, we do require relief. However, it's, uh, consistent with what the current setback, uh, especially that right side, uh, currently sits at. Uh, with respect to the rear yard, uh, this is a shallow lot condition as well. Uh, although thirty feet is the typical requirement of the zoning code, we're able to reduce that a bit, uh, take five feet off of the rear yard setback requirement because of its shallow condition. Uh, we are at twenty point six feet, and therefore, uh, we slightly, still slightly below the requirement. Uh, so therefore, we are requesting a variance for that small difference. However, that is an improved condition from the original plan that was originally presented. Uh, the FAR that we are proposing is one point seven. That is in excess of the, uh, point eight that is permissible. Uh, but again, this is quite consistent with the surrounding context of this immediate neighborhood. Uh, we aren't changing the height of our building, as you can see here in the elevation. However, because we do propose that addition in the rear, uh, and there is a story limit, um, in, uh, in the two-F district at two and a half, we wouldn't require a variance because that would be considered, uh, a third-story, uh, addition or a third story on the addition. So we are requesting relief for a number of stories. Um, there is no, uh, additional open space requirement since we are changing the use from a two to a three unit. That's considered, uh, an other use. Uh, however, we do provide a little over eight hundred square feet of open space, including, uh, that rear yard patio area, as well as that landscaped area towards the back. Uh, last but not least is parking. Uh, this would require, uh, two additional parking spaces under art, the calculations of Article fifty-three. Uh, however, uh, it would be somewhat impractical to add any parking to this site based upon the current conditions of the building. Uh, this will offer an opportunity to take, you know, a building that is, uh, def- definitely in need of, uh, a good upgrade and some repair, uh, and also upgrade the life safety of this building because we would be adding sprinkler and, uh, updated, uh, fire alarm systems to the building itself. Uh, we feel that the, uh, requirement to have two parking spaces, especially within close walking distance of Airport T Station and, uh, uh, close, close to also the bus lines, uh, this, this variance could be granted without a, uh, substantial detriment to the area. Uh, I'll pause there and answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Linds. Any questions from the board?
Yes, can you just please confirm that the first floor at the rear bump-out aligns your, the adjacent property rear line?
So, uh, is Chris available from Six Eight Six?
I'll see that name. Is he a panelist? Oh, yeah, he's he's on. He was on earlier. No, I was going to start about that. Um, yes, we're approximately about a foot farther than we still do to the left of us.
One, one foot further? Okay, because your, on your roof plan, it says deck below second floor. So on the roof plan, it seems like it's three foot out.
Yeah, it was only, it was only about a quarter or so because then we've got the patio and all that stuff that, that, um, goes up beyond. The patio is obviously, you know, on on break.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to add one item, if I may. Uh, we do have, uh, the support of that direct abutter to our left. I think as I, uh, suggested with the, uh, improvement to the facade, but also with respect to our addition, we did have, uh, an opportunity to do the outreach, and they have support for the project as well.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Can you hear enough? May I have a public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project was previously denied without prejudice by the board. Uh, the applicant went through a second community process with, uh, the reduced size project from four to three units. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Two abutters joined the call, and one had questions regarding setbacks, but no opposition was voiced at the meeting. Our office has received six letters in support, and at this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a raised hand? Um- Any other raised hands? Uh, Joshua, can you state your name and I just for the record, briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Yeah, Josh Bloomberg, uh, I, the direct abutter at one twenty-six Saratoga Street, uh, would go on record in full support of the project. Uh, I'm very excited for the, uh, upgrades, which has been long due for the property. I've seen the plans. I'm fully in support, and I think it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Thanks, Josh. Have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval with a proviso to have the roof deck access from an internal stair of the third-floor unit and to remove the spiral staircase connection.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Take one.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
We'll move on to the recommendations, uh, from the recent subcommittee meeting. And basically, I'll read the case number, uh, the address, and the decision, and the recommended decisions. Case BOA one three eight seven one four one with an address of four thirty-six Western Avenue. The decision was to approve. Case BOA one three five nine eight one nine, address of twenty-one Capen Street. Decision was to approve with proviso that the plans for any exterior changes, such as signage and buffering, be submitted to the BPDA for design review approval. Case BOA one three eight two three one six, address one, one fourteen eighty-six to fourteen ninety-two Dorchester Avenue, the decision wa- the proposal was approved. Case BOA one four one 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 six four, address of thirty-one Hallett-Davis Street was approved. Case BOA one four one six two five three, the address of sixty-two Capen Street was approved with the proviso that the plans with particular attention, attention to increasing usable open space and rear yard setback, be submitted to the BPDA for design review approval. Case BOA one three nine four eight zero zero, the address of seven oh five Mass- Massachusetts Avenue was approved. Case BOA one four two nine three eight eight, with the address of one fifty-two to one fifty-six Dudley Dudley Street, oh, one, one fifty, excuse me, address of one fifty-two to one fifty-six Dudley Street was approved. Case BOA one four two four one eight three, the address of thirty-one Telegraph Street was approved with the proviso that no building code be, relief be granted. Case BOA one four zero five two nine one, with an address of nine twenty-four East Fourth Street was the, case was deferred until May eighteenth, uh, since since the property is on the mass historical list and to obtain a recommendation on curb cut from Boston Transportation Department. Case BOA one four one five three five nine, with the address of four fifty-seven to four sixty-nine A West Broadway was approved with the proviso that no ground floor gym be put in place. Case BOA one three eight seven one three one, with the address of three fifty-nine to three sixty-nine Huntington Avenue was approved. Case BOA one three eight seven one two eight, with an address of eighty-four Summer Street was approved. Case BOA one four one four three eight eight, the address being one fifty-two Canal Street was approved with the proviso that the use expiration end three years. Also, that plans for screening and buffering be submitted to the BPDA for design review approval. Case BOA one four two one two two seven, the address of three thirty-one Hanover Street was approved with the proviso that plans for any exterior changes be submitted to the BPDA for design, design review approval. Case BOA one four two one two seven two, the address, the address being twenty-three to twenty-seven Tyler Street was approved with the proviso that plans for any exterior changes be submitted to the BPDA for design review approval. Case BOA one four three two zero one five, address being two thirty to two thirty-eight Schremer Street was approved with the proviso that plans for any exterior changes be submitted to the BPDA for design review approval. Case BOA one four zero eight seven zero eight, address of one eighteen Bartlett Street was approved with the proviso that plans be submitted to the BPDA for design review with the attention to the doors. Case BOA one four one two eight zero two, the address of seventeen Alston Street was approved with the proviso that the plans shall be, be submitted to the BPDA for design review approval. And finally, case BOA one four three four eight one one, with the address of eighteen to twenty Meridian Street would be the, will be deferred until April sixth.
Okay, may I have a, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve the subcommittee report?
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I request that we, uh, take a break?
Yes, let's take a fifteen-minute break.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.